I call the meeting to order, City of University Heights Iowa City Council Meeting today is July 11th, 2023. And as Mike said, we're on Zoom and also in person at the Community Center OUP. I'm special thanks to Mike for setting this all up. And having and our trial run this morning worked very well, so I'm hoping it will continue to work. And I apologize for not being in person. And I appreciate being able to do the meeting by Zoom. First order of business is roll call, and I see all five councilor present. And approval of minutes for June 13th and June 27th. The minutes were circulated by Mike. Are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, the minutes of the 13th and the 27th are approved by unanimous consent. Okay, so I want to explain a few things. Because comments from the members of the public, and I see the public are here, thank you for coming, and they're here on Zoom and in the room. Is there anyone from the public that wants to speak on anything on the agenda, but they won't be able to stay for the meeting? I want to make sure they're able to speak. Okay, I'm gonna move forward and explain some things. First, to speak, I'd like you please to go to the podium and state your name and address. And you see where the podium is, it's kind of by the thermostat over there and with the clear plastic podium. So we'll start about the hotel items on the agenda. And with that, I want to explain that we'll start with staff. Steve and Ryan and Terry, if they want to speak, they can. Then the developers will speak. Then public input. Anyone attending in person or on Zoom, and they have a five minute limit. And I'd like to start with people who've not spoken before, if there are anybody, if anybody is here. After public input will be council discussion only. And council, of course, can ask staff questions, developers' questions, whatever they want, then they'll consider the agenda items. So with that, I want to start with Steve Ballard. In his legal report, he explains these four resolutions, and Steve, I hand it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, so I did outline things in my legal report, outlined them, I think, last, last month as well, different agenda items for consideration. There's four resolutions tonight, I'll go ahead and summarize all of them now, if that's, if that's all right, Mayor.
Perfect.
Okay, so the first one, 2321, is a request by the hotel owners to have game day parking. The current PUD development agreement prohibits game day parking. And so the request is to have game day parking as, as the, as the parking exists for. And I say it that way because there's another request that I'll get to, the fourth resolution, where the hotel owners have asked to increase the number of spaces. But the 2321 asks to have game day parking in the parking lot as it exists now, not more than 196 spots, not on the grass. There's other provisions with PUD development agreement that prohibit those things. There hasn't been any request to change those things. And so it's just to have game day parking in the existing hotel parking lot. That's what 2321 would permit if the council approves it. And the council, as I've said before, has the right to approve an amendment to the PUD development agreement. It can be amended. With, you know, it's an agreement, so with the, with the consent and agreement of the hotel owners, we want their asking for. Second one, similar in the sense, so this is 2322, similar in the sense that it is a requested change to the PUD development agreement to allow temporary signage with regard to Easter and Mother's Day. As I said in the, in my legal report, there's a separate provision that requires the location of signs and the signs themselves to be approved by further resolution of the council. So this 2322 would permit the hotel owners to plan to locate those signs or have those signs, you know, next spring, I guess, Easter and Mother's Day. But first they would have to come to the council and say, this is what we want to put up, this is what the sign's gonna look like, and here's where we want to put it. And the council would have to approve those items by resolution. The third resolution, 2324, is a request to change the CZA, the Conditional Zoning Agreement, to permit game day parking at 905 Melrose Avenue. And, and this one, there's, there's some history that I think you probably need to know, otherwise, at least to me, it kind of looks spooky. At the time, the hotel developers, Greg and Jim, came to the council in 2017 with the ideas developing the hotel. There were a lot of things that were discussed, one of which was, well, if you're gonna buy this property and if this, if the council is going to change the zoning limit development of a hotel, we don't want you buying up a bunch of other properties and maybe making a extended stay hotel or some other kind of hotel. That was a, that was a thought or a discussion point. And so there was an evolution of some provisions in the council's discussions with Jim and Greg about that. First, it said you can't own any other property in University Heights. And then it was, well, you can't own any property like roughly east of Sunset. And then it was, well, okay, you can own something maybe, but it can't be for a hotel use. And that's kind of where it landed with one exception, and that was 905, 905 Melrose, which I guess I didn't go look at the timing, if, if they already owned that or they already planned on it. And the thinking, my recollection of the history and the thinking was, it, it was seen, I think, by the council to be a good idea. If the hotel owners also own 905 Melrose, because whoever owns 905 Melrose, whether they live there themselves, whether they become landlords and lease that property to somewhere else, they're gonna be as close to the hotel as anybody. And so if there's common ownership, you know, chances are the owners of 905 aren't gonna complain about what's going on at the hotel because they are the owners of the hotel too. And so that's what was, was set upon in the Conditional Zoning Agreement. The Conditional Zoning Agreement itself is a, it's a tool or a mechanism. It's authorized by Iowa Code Chapter 414, which is, which is the chapter that authorizes cities to, to have zoning. And it says that if, if someone proposes a rezoning, that a city council can, you know, require certain conditions and make a rezoning subject to commitments enforced by legal recorded commitments by the, the party asking for rezoning. And so that's what the Conditional Zoning Agreement is and was. And so that's in that document. Boiling it down to present requests. I'm gonna say Jim and Greg, but it's really University Lake Partners II LLC, their entity, is permitted to own, continue owning 905 Melrose with two, two conditions. One is that only hotel management and their families can live in the hotel or live in 905. And there can't be any game day park. Okay. So that's the history. The request is to change the Conditional Zoning Agreement to, to allow game day parking at 905 Melrose. That is what Resolution 2324 does. Resolution 2325 then is the, the other part, if you will, of the requested change that concerns parking. And what 2325 does is it changes the maximum number of parking spaces that are permitted at the hotel from 196 to 250. As I've said in my report, and there've been a lot of discussions among staff, the hotel owners, the mayor of late. There are certain things that staff, and I'm just gonna speak for myself, but that we needed and wanted from the, from the owners before we thought it was a good idea to set this for public hearing. You know, not just change the number of spaces and then sort of figure out how that's gonna be configured on the, on the footprint of the, of the parking lot, but to show the city ahead of time, this is how we're gonna configure our parking lot. Given the dimensions, given the requirement to maintain green space, given the, well, given the dimensions of the parking lot, given the requirement to maintain green space, given the required dimensions of a parking space, given emergency vehicle access and, you know, a number of other things. So as a city staff, we said we need some drawings, a site plan. And as I said, I'll let, I'll let Ryan speak to more of the details about that. But the idea would be to have that before you set a public hearing, so that staff has an opportunity to work with the developers, engineers or designers, come up with sort of a final plan. Staff has an opportunity to give the council a report and a recommendation about that plan, if there's a recommendation forthcoming. And then the public has a chance to evaluate the actual plan, the staff reports, and then come to the public hearing and, and, and provide their, their public input. We, at this point, as a staff, do not have all of the information that we need to start that process of evaluation and what I just described. And for that reason, my recommendation, and for the third time, I won't speak for Ryan and Terry, but my recommendation is that you not set a public hearing on this request yet, but, but rather defer even setting a public hearing until we have that information and an opportunity to evaluate it, give reports and so forth. Think that's all I have to say about that one, and that would, that would conclude before our resolutions that are, that are before you tonight. I guess I will say, so, so when you says, when you set a public hearing, then the public hearing will give, obviously, the public's opportunity to comment upon the requested zoning change. The zoning change is to increase the maximum number of parking from 196 to 250, as I said a minute ago. As I said, we haven't seen a detailed site plan. Right now, the, the PUD development agreement prohibits any inner or any changes to green space. So, you know, if, if the proposal includes changes to green space, well, then that would need to be considered by the council as well. And if the council at some point does increase that parking number, then the council will then need to change the PUD development agreement because it also reflects a maximum number of parking. And so it's kind of a hand and bloodsucking situation, but it starts with, we would start with amending the zoning ordinance, once you have an opportunity to have a public hearing, once you set a public hearing with the information that I've described. Thank you, Mayor. That's what I would say by way of introduction.
Thank you, Steve. That was a good history. I appreciate it. We'll go to, are there any comments from Ryan? Ryan is our city engineer, Ryan Foley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Steve, I guess, I may have missed it. Is there something on D O E permit parking?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, okay, thank you. So 2321, I talked about, I talked about game day parking. 2321 also says that the hotel parking lot as it exists now could be used for daily parking. You know, feed bay, right now, what the PUD development agreement says is the only people that really can park at the hotel are people that are staying there, people that are working there, or like service providers during the time that they're working there. The request in 2321 is to allow game day parking, but also to allow, you know, what I call daily park. Presumably, people who work into the hospital, pay a fee, park at the hotel, walk over to the hospital. So that is also a request of 2321. Thanks for that reminder.
So I guess Mayor Fromm is okay, if I just go ahead then?
You can comment how you want. You can wait for questions, but I know, I think you had some comments you wanted to make.
Oh, yeah. So I guess I, regarding, there's a few different things, right, proposals, resolutions. A lot of these things all really depend on the site plan, which we haven't seen a detailed site plan yet. The majority of what we've seen is or heard is just discussions and a, and a sort of preliminary exhibit that just kind of numbers stalls, but it doesn't have a whole lot of dimensions, it's not scale. Sufficient analysis of whether that layout or that current layout on the current parking lot would restrict the drive aisle on the west and south ends of the parking lot below what the design standards allow. So I've relayed that to Greg. I also talked to the Iowa City Fire Chief today about that. And, you know, after looking at it briefly, my discussion with him was, he thinks they could still have access, proper access, but he would require a a detailed site plan with all the dimensions showing the first face that he will have in order to be able to sign off on it. Then as far as daily parking, I guess, my understanding was the daily parking was something that was, and perhaps this was my mistake, but it was being proposed with an increase to the number of stalls. But as Steve said, it sounds like the resolution is just to allow daily parking within the current layout of the parking lot. So so I was going to comment that with daily parking, if it's with an increased volume of stalls, you know, there was an MPO study in March of 2018 that evaluated the intersection with Melrose and, and at that time, it was, it was done because of the proposed restaurant on the rooftop. And they didn't really find that the proposed restaurant would overburden the intersection with that report. But they did note that if there's a possible intensity or land use change, that they may want to reevaluate. So if there's going to be a large number increase to the time, time, the peak hour, time when people are coming and going from that parking lot, that may be something that the council wants to consider reevaluating or getting additional information on. Yeah, so I think, I think like Steve said, the, the PUD and zoning ordinance require certain requirements for PUD application. And that includes detailed site plans, including grading, you know, drainage, dimensioning, landscape plans. So, so those are things that we have not seen. So at this time, I don't have a good feel for what the, what the actual proposed layout would end up being.
Thank you, Ryan. Terry, is Terry here tonight?
Yes.
Oh, hi, Terry. Would, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Um, yeah, this is sort of a, I didn't know I was coming to council meeting until later in the day, so I didn't have a lot of time to research. But yeah, I, I agree with Ryan. I think we need detailed plans. But I don't think that that would, would go ahead and, how should I say it? Not for, 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 you know, to a, you know, to a public hearing on August 8th, because I think that would give them time to get their plans together and then they could have it to the council by August 1st. Then council will have a week, go ahead and review it. Also, everybody's been talking about parking design standards. My recollection, recollection in the code is, the only design standards that I can see is the size of the parking space. Doesn't talk about the width of the aisles. You know, there, there's a lot of things that can be done to go ahead and increase parking. You know, you can go in one ways. You know, then you can reduce it down to 10 feet. But everybody keeps talking about the standards, and I, I don't know really of any standards in the code inside the parking space. And every jurisdiction, because I, I've worked in eight of them, they all have different standards. There's no, it's, it's whatever the, the city wants to go ahead and propose and write into their ordinance. So, I mean, there's some, there's some jurisdictions that go, okay, we're gonna go ahead and you can provide up to 50% compact parking spaces or 50% full size spaces. And also you can go down in some jurisdictions, they'll go down for their compact spaces, they can be eight by 15. So now that picks up for every eight spaces, that picks up another parking space. But I, I think there's, there's a, there's a way to go ahead and, and do this. I think, I think we need to be, my opinion, I think, the city needs to be more flexible. And that's all I have right now, but for answering any questions that anybody has.
Thank you, Terry.
Question.
Okay, this is Lisa, right?
Right. So I guess I have a couple of questions. Whatever the, the width is that you're talking about the aisle, that allows the emergency vehicles to pass all the way around?
Oh, that, that's something you'd have to take into, into account. I mean, on, on a lot of these, these fire department accesses, if you want to call it, drives, they go down to 10 foot. I mean, I've talked to the fire marshal in Iowa City, I've talked to Dan, and I don't think he has a problem with that. You know, I would, I would go ahead and keep it, you know, as wide as you possibly can, but, you know, for a one-way traffic, 10 foot, I mean, you get a much wider 10-foot roads on even that some places, you got parking and you sign going down a local street. So, you know, there, there's SUDAS standards for that, and then there's also standards in the actual international fire code to tell you, you know, what you need to have at a minimum for drive aisles and so forth.
And Ryan, I guess, maybe I can carry you quite well enough, because the traffic study for the restaurant was looking at whatever restaurant hours that they're looking at, and if they're selling parking at the hospital or whatever they're proposing, that would be more of a rush hour thing, is that what you were saying about?
Uh, yeah.
That also in addition to increasing the number of people?
Right, yeah, right. So in addition, so in addition, it's hard because there's multiple variables, right? We're talking about multiple situations. You're talking about either permitting stalls on the existing number, right, 196, or this possible increase and then permitting also.
Right.
So, so we don't even know how many stalls would be permanent stalls, so it's hard for me to say. And, and I don't want it to come across as saying, you know, you need to do this, it's just something that you might want to consider depending on getting more information about how many stalls are gonna be permanent daily parking stalls. And those people are assumedly coming during your peak hour access, right?
The event space would also benefit this church, although it wasn't anyone.
Right, yeah. And that's something that, you know, if you take it into account now, that, and the council would be more accurate today now that the buildings and operations. And, and like Terry said, so when I'm referencing design standards, I guess I'll just say that to clarify. I'm talking about SUDAS, because we use SUDAS for City of University Heights for our design standards and our specification standards for our projects. And so, you know, I did look at the plans, I was trying to find it in agreement, so I apologize, I didn't quite find if it stated explicitly that SUDAS design standards are required, but 24 feet is the drive aisle width that's required for perpendicular stalls in SUDAS. There's some other variables that need taking into account, depending on the layout, to change or modify a few things to those dimensions, but I, I looked at Iowa City's ordinance, code of ordinances, talk with their planning department, and their requirement is 22-foot drive aisle for two-way traffic adjacent to perpendicular stall. So, so, you know, if, if council wants to take that into consideration, that perhaps 22 feet, you know, just because that's what Iowa City uses, you know, Terry mentioned Iowa City standards, you know, other jurisdictional standards, but just want to clarify that, that right now, the, the layout we've seen is for perpendicular stalls, not for a one-way drive aisle, not for any angle stalls. So I, I don't disagree with Terry that there's probably a way to arrange it differently, that could be a change or a traffic flow differently, but we just haven't seen a proposal like that.
For some reason, I hear Daryl, and it's on my screen. Am I hearing that? Anyway, I mean, it's on my screen instead of the council, and it says Daryl. But we'll go on to public input. And I have a list of three people so far who've signed up for public input. And the first one is Pat Bauer. Pat, would you like to come up to the podium and speak to the council? Thank you.
Just to clarify, at the beginning of the meeting, I thought you said that the developers would present, and then there would be public input. Did I mishear that?
Oh, you're right. Thank you, Pat. You're exactly right. I have too many sheets of paper here. Thank you for clarifying that for me. Okay. Well, the question's kind of through me, and so, I'm sorry. So yes, let's hear from the developers, Jim or Greg?
Sit or stand up?
It'd be easier to stand in the podium.
Would you stand up at the podium?
Or anything, yeah.
Thank you.
Um, what, so what do you want? You want me to talk about each, each, each item on the agenda or where, I guess?
Yes, that'd be a good place to start. Yes.
So originally, this started, you know, before the last meeting. We, I, I expressed to everybody that, that every time I go to my staff meetings, where we, my staff is saying, you know, we don't have enough parking, we want parking, you know, getting complaints. So I tried to, you know, put a parking lot upon the grass. Went to pull a permit for that and didn't know that needed to be in order to change. Found out that had to be in order to change, and we went through that, but a lot of public inputs said, don't, you know, don't put a parking lot there, and so I backed away from that. I, I said, okay, I don't want to disrupt the neighborhood, I don't, I don't want to be a bad guy. I'm not gonna put a parking lot on that grass. So that, so then that led me down the road of trying to find how to put parking on the lot that I have. And I strategized, I was out there the very next day, I spent two hours out there the very next day, we didn't know where I can go. And I I came up with this way of perpendicular parking, you know, moving the wall, you know, nine foot, creating that boundary line to 11 foot. And and then I was, you know, trying to find ways of just creating parking to move the parking up to, you know, as many as we can get. And, and you know, last night I came up with 249 spots on a, on a plane. And I, I thought it was, you know, I thought I put dimensions on there enough, but maybe I didn't, I didn't, I didn't know, didn't know that I, like, all the dimensions that you needed, I just, you know, I put 11-foot, seven-foot sidewalk, 18-foot spot, 24-foot wide, for two-way traffic. Right, you saw that, but, and then, so I, I tried, so I guess, you know, it wasn't good enough, then we need engineer plans now. So moving forward, I, I can get engineer plans, you know, I could probably have them in a couple of weeks. So like Kurt, you know, Terry was saying, you know, I, if August 1st or August 25th, I could have plans ready to go and, and we could still have the public hearing if that's, if that's possible. I could have plans ready to go and, and we could still have the public hearing if that's, if that's possible. Sure, MMS, you know, we worked with MMS quite a bit. I'm sure they did, you know, helping out was, you know, getting it expedited. So if the city council would, you know, um, agree to that, then I'll get the engineer plans, you know, by the twenty-fifth and then give Ryan and Steve and Terry uh, two weeks to review and, you know, we can hold on it at that point. As far as the, uh, you know, football parking, um, it was, the football parking was something that we, uh, you know, when we built a building, we, we built a building beside of, you know, a football stadium. And, um, it, it's, uh, it, you know, we had expenses when we built the building, you know, when we got this thing approved. You know, we didn't know what our budget was and we, we tried to make the building as beautiful as we could. So we, we, um, you know, we we probably over budgeted, you know, went over budget. So then when we go to, when we go to, uh, you know, run the hotel, it, it was really hard to, you know, to pay the bills. And so, and everybody's asking us, can, can we park the lot and tailgate? And, uh, we're right across from the stadium. The rea- the reason the property cost us so much was it's because it was beside the stadium. It was beside the house, but, you know, it was a lot of money to, because that's what Michael Flom, you know, did when, when, when he owned the property, he had two, three hundred people tailgating, you know, there. And so, you know, sorts of properties, you know, been doing, you know, through years, you know, so, so, yeah, we, we had tailgate markers and, 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 uh, and I thought, well, you know, but it's in the ordinance, you know, PD, then we can't do that. So let's make it, you know, see if I can make it legal. Because I don't, I don't like to be the bad guy. I don't, I don't like to be someone who looks at me like I'm something that I'm not. Um, you know, that was an oversight. We probably should have came to the city council beforehand and, and, uh, but, you know, I made sure that we did it in a very clean way, uh, no riffraff and, and no, uh, and no, uh, we, we, we keep the parking lot super clean. It's clean before anyone leaves. So, um, so I'm just trying to maximize the, the business. I'm trying to run a business, trying to, to maximize, you know, the potential of the business. And, and I, and I, and I hope the city would help me do that, I guess. Um, the conditional zoning agreement, uh, item, the house, you know, it, it, it's a house in the dead center of, uh, it's a house in that center of, of tailgate craziness. I mean, you got the whole side of all the port. You got the Dorothy Jean Bell House and the, and the concrete guy's house. I mean, it is, is jam-packed full of people. And, you know, we parked a handful of people there on gay days as well. And I was like, well, you know, like that, that's breaking the rules. I don't, I don't want to break the rule. I want to, I want to, I want, I want to be, I want to be, um, you know, like everybody else. And if, 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 think it, it looked really odd if, if no one's on the grass and everybody around there is parking. I mean, people will literally, we would have to police it. People will do it without, without asking. I mean, they, I mean, football, football is crazy. And if I, if I didn't have anybody parking there, if I didn't have anybody tailgating there, there would be people just put camp there because it, it happened when we were building our hotel. People would just come and sit on our lot and tailgate on our lot. Most of the time it's people, uh, out of, the out of towners. They don't care. They'll park anywhere. They'll, they'll do anything. And if I didn't, then I would have to be out there policing it the whole time. And, and running them off. And, and then that would, you know, I'd have to get the police involved. And it just would become, it would become chaos. If I, if, you know, just let it alone. And so I thought, well, okay, we'll see if I can get the city council to read it. Let me do tailgate parking there. Um, two, is that, I think there's, the last thing is the, the daily.
Daily signage and the number of parking.
So the signage, you know, it is what it is. We have a, a brunch. We have an Easter, Easter brunch and we have a Mother's Day brunch. And, um, you know, and I, I read something somewhere, is it, is it our advertising or whatever? No, we, we advertise on Facebook and we tell our customers and we tell a lot of people. It's not our only, you know, advertisement, but it, it is a nice reminder for people who, you know, don't know us, you know, don't know that we have it up there. It's not like it's, I can remember the, the Marriott in Cedar Rapids. Everybody knew it was, you know, it was the brunch to go to. And we don't have our name out on that yet. So it's just be nice to, um, put to sign up. And we, I feel like it's a nice looking, both of the signs are really nice looking. So it's, it's not something that I'm, you know, it's my only form of advertising. It's just, it's a nice reminder for people that were having it. And, yeah, we, we had quite a few people there. You know, certain, you know, like three or four time slots for people to come and eat and leave. And it, it turned out to be a beautiful thing. It's amazing. It was, you know, they decorate the room like a, like a wedding and it, it, it's really nice. I, I don't, everyone to try it. It's, it's amazing. So, um, and then the daily parking. Um, so how the daily parking happened was, you know, everybody at the university hospitals, we come over and, and they, they park in our lot and they leave. And we have, you know, in, in, anywhere between two and ten cars. Every day, somebody's pulling in there. Somebody's, you know, they, they're parking thing behind, they're late for work. And they're, they're parking their lot and they leave. And, you know, or what, whatever reason, there's, there's tons and tons of people that park in our hotel all the time. And, and, and walk over the hospital. And, and if we're not there all day, every day, policing that again, then it, it, they're, they're, they're going to be there all day. So how it evolved was, you know, um, we policed it, then we did, and then we started noticing that our parking lot started to fill up. And the hotel's not that full. So why are we, we started policing it more. And it just became a thing where we have repeat violators, repeat violators. And so finally, it's like, Jesus. You know, if these people want to park here so bad, why, why don't we just let them pay to park here? And so we said, okay, for a hundred bucks, you can park here. So, so that's how it evolved. It wasn't like I woke up one day and said, hey, I want to go break the rules and have daily parking. It wasn't like that. It was, it was, it evolved into, you know, letting people park and then friends, friends of mine that park there and walk and go, and, and go to the hospital. And, um, and then they're, they would tell their friends. And then they would ask, well, can I, can I park? You know, you're letting Miss Key Park, can, can, can I park there too? And it's, it's like, so then we started letting some people park there. And, uh, along with chase some people out. And then, uh, so then it started being like, okay, now, now it's full again. Well, I don't really like that. I don't, so we kind of, we cut it out. We, we kind of stopped it. We stopped it because, you know, there was a couple of comments, well, we, you know, drove over here for lunch and, you know, we're kind of crowded. So we didn't stop, we didn't eat. So I'm like, crap, now I'm driving business away. So then we stopped doing the daily part. So, so it's, the daily parking is, is something that, you know, allows me to, uh, you know, generate a little bit of revenue when, when the hotel's not busy. Because during the day, the hotel's not busy. There's no one there. Everybody's gone. So during the day, the, the parking lot is wide open. There's nobody in it other than, you know, people that are staying at the hotel during the day, I guess. So, um, I, I thought, well, if I could, you know, sell some of the spaces and have them leave. So the rule is they have to leave by four o'clock. And, and that, and that's been working now. And, and we, we don't sell very many spaces. So it, 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 you know, like, we cut that down to a minimum. So it's, it's, it's actually, you know, I don't feel like it's a nuisance at all. It's because honestly, what if I don't police it, it's going to happen anyway. If, if, if I don't, if, if the parking slots are wide open, people are going to park there. You know, whether or not I, I let them or not. It's, 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 it's very, it's, uh, it's very frustrating, but to get through it, so. Um, but outside of that, you know, I just, I, I would ask that, you know, Steve and, and Ryan, uh, kind of reconsiderate. I sent everybody, you know, open, you know, we could find a way. I was trying to find a way to, to still keep the public hearing going. Um, by doing the, you know, changing the verbiage of the, of the PD and the, and the ordinance to, uh, you know, having no less than one ninety-six spots and having a minimum of one ninety-six spots. I think, I think if, if we change that to the, to the minimum and to the less than, send an email that, I think, you know, if I did want to add parking in the future, next year, next week, I feel like, Ryan, you would have, you know, I would, I would submit a permit to, to Terry. You would give it to you and you'd have all, you'd have full control of me changing any parking in the future. And, and I, I don't, I, I don't see, you know, a, a massive problem with, with, with changing the verbiage to where, to where I can work directly with you and Terry and Steve, if, if he wanted to, you know, to weigh in on it to, to, for in the future of parking. Because, like I say, right now, if I wanted to add one place, if I just wanted to add one location, one, one little parking spot, I have have to have a public hearing, do the three readings. And I just noticed that not many other jurisdictions in the area work like that. And and all we'd have to do is change those two, those two words, you know, in the ordinance, PD, but, um, I'm not here to, you know, to cause trouble. I'm just here to try to, 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 to make it through, uh, the, you know, the hotel and keep it afloat, keep it beautiful. And, um, I don't, I don't want us to fail. We have, you know, coming up soon, we, we have a huge endeavor coming toward us that I'm really, it gives me a lot of anxiety. You know, and I'm not supposed to talk about it, but, you know, interest rates, I, if I don't, I don't find a way to make revenues can be hard. Interest rates are going to be going up for me because my loan matures in a year. And, and the interest rates are about almost three points more than, than my loan. On the hotels, a lot of money. And if I have to pay three points more, I mean, you guys know how much, you guys know how much you save when you, when, when you refinance your house to have a point. You know, it's, I know it's not your concern. I know it's not your issues. I know it's the risk we took. And, uh, you know, I know hotels and restaurants are extremely risky business. That's why I'm asking for the city's support, helping me find ways to, to make it work. And that, that's, that's why I'm here. I'm not, not here to, to, to be greedy. I'm not here to fill my pockets full of money. I came from a, you know, it came from an extremely poor background. She guys don't know about. So it just frustrates me when people paint the house to be something I'm not. So I'm asking you to help me.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, did anyone from your group want to, else want to speak? Jim?
Yeah. My name's Jim Glasgow. I'm one of the other owners of the hotel. And, uh, I'd kind of like to just reiterate what, what Greg is saying. We're, we're not struggling at the hotel, but we had to make it through COVID. Uh, we had to make through really slow sales to start with. We have a lot of expenses on that hotel that are not consistent with other hotels. I, I'm involved in three other hotels as an investor. This is the only hotel that I have that is not going to throw off any money. Uh, and I don't see it throwing up money to back to the investors, at least for another five years. And part of that reason is just because of the land cost, the cost of construction and the quality that we put into this building. That said, we are number one or two in the nation as far as, uh, courtyards. So we're, we're trying to keep the hotel really at high scale. And eventually I think that's going to pay off for us. Um, but we are scrambling to make money however we can, whether it's through the event center, the restaurant, uh, and parking, however we can do it, we have to keep making the payments. Now, uh, the payments that we have are huge. I mean, you know, a couple hundred thousand. And, and I know a month. And now the city is, I mean, stands to make pretty good money, excuse me, off of what, you know, what the hotel is generating. And that's great. That's what we wanted. We wanted to have a partnership with the city. And I think that's the reason, what Greg's trying to say is we, we need to work with the city. We need, uh, help from the city any way we can, whether we work with, uh, the planning and the department to develop a plan that will work so we can have more parking. And, um, you know, I, I enjoy working with the city. I worked with Lisa and Louise and we got the Triangle Park, the drinking fountain and, um, the dog drinking fountain and the little box you got now for the, the, the library. And, um, same thing, we helped clean up the trails down there. I, I pulled out a whole bunch of cast iron light posts out of the trail that, that was over there, uh, on the ten acres. And, and we donated fifty thousand to the city for Triangle Park. And we gave them to the two houses on Olive Ford. So, I mean, we put a lot into the city and I intend to keep doing that. I mean, I'll help Louise and, and the council any way I can. I mean, so we're, I mean, we intend to be part of the community and, and help the community. We just are kind of looking for any way that we can, and you can help us and keep us going and keep, keep us having a really good hotel and a really good project. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Uh, Michelle, did you want to talk? I don't, I'm just asking.
Parking a little bit more.
Would you come to the podium and, and tell us what your job is, what you do?
What is my job? I do many things. I do anything from washing dishes when it has to be done to parking cars and policing the parking lot. I do this on football games. Um, I do it the night before. I stand out there till eleven o'clock, making sure that people aren't illegally coming in, driving around, excess traffic, trying to cut down on things. Our goal is to be a good neighbor. We try and the couple of people and their friends, like Greg was saying, that we make these people leave by four o'clock because we don't want to add traffic to the leaving time of day. Um, other things that we do is like when we do have all of our, um, hotel guests and football parking, we actually have come into the habit of opening the gate on the backside of the hotel to exit a lot of that traffic out there to not run it in to Melrose to make it easier for University Heights and its people to get back to normal. As Greg said, we're out there till midnight sometimes speaking of trash, whether this is even myself, other employees, people we hire, we keep the neighborhoods trash. They bring it all out the street and they just dump it. We go and we collect all of their trash and we bring it in and we throw it away also. And we pay all those extra fees and dumpings to keep the neighborhood nice. So being a great neighbor is a part of who we are. And it's not something that we're trying to bait and switch or trick anybody. We want to be a good neighbor. We want you to love us and to be a happy neighbor. We're not trying to hurt, make anybody unhappy in any way. And any way that we can find to make things better, we are constantly trying to do. But yes, on the same token, we're also trying to survive and help ourselves. And that's all we're asking is for a little understanding in that. That's, that's about it.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to public input. Thank you, Pat, for reminding me where we are. And Pat Bauer is here, who will speak now.
Pat Bauer, three, three, eight, Cozer. Um, first of all, an addendum to the memo I sent to counselors on Sunday, uh, in which I suggested that trying to scrap, cram more parking spaces into the existing space is going to make it very, very cramped. Uh, particularly given the council's seemingly openness to, uh, an event center kind of thing. I know that Steve is giving you a, a, a legal opinion on that. Uh, but to the extent, uh, the existing ones allow event centers operations, or you would change it to allow that, you need more parking. And I would suggest, as I didn't have, but the only thing is And I would suggest, as I didn't know, but the only thing is, is to expand the zone westward to pick up nine oh five, nine oh three, and nine oh one Melrose. Uh, now Steve's legal report points out that the CZA has a restriction on that, that you're changing the CZA. For parking at nine oh five, certainly you could change that to allow acquisition of those lots in order to. Provide a very, very nice, tasteful additional parking to accommodate the over demand that's being created by. Event center activities. I, I wanna speak primarily to twenty-three, twenty-one, but also to twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, Steve's report mentions breaking twenty-three, twenty-one up into game day and, uh, workday parking. And I would strongly urge you to do that, because I think they, uh, present very, very difficult considerations. Uh, in the memo that I sent a couple of weeks back, I suggested that game day parking would be fine if you allowed, uh, people at the hotel. When they assume it's booked to capacity on game day weekends, to sponsor tailgating events. Uh, and to give them an extra parking space or two for their guests. Uh, but as Stan, you know, the, I think when, the, the, part of this is history. Um, we used to have the news property back when, um, uh, before life and condominiums came along. Um, and industrial scale tailgating presents problems, and when we've, uh, looked at the hotel. Uh, we asked for imports from the police department about, and, you know, I don't know much about game day activities, I hunker in my basement to avoid the. Inebriated fans who are urinating in the arbor vida along the back of my lot. Um, but I gather you folks over the years have heard a lot about game day misconduct, uh, and the concern was scaled. Um, so, uh, as Stan points out, I think at a minimum, uh, it should be either a special exception or maybe a one-year license. Uh, so that you can pull it, uh, or not renew it, uh, if they don't, uh, police their lot, uh, to keep those problems, as I say, from. Uh, compounding, uh, what's already there, you also be needing to think about this space here. Uh, presumably, I haven't looked, but Steve sometimes borrows language from one place to another, it wouldn't surprise me that, that the, uh, OUP. Uh, quite agreement has something about, uh, selling, uh, food and beverage and, and game day parking, so be thinking about even-handedness. Heard a lot of sad stories, a lot of invocations of, of sympathy. Uh, we made some misjudgments, but we're really good neighbors, and we mean well, and we're good neighbors, I keep hearing good neighbors. Uh, but good neighbors aren't scoffers, right, there's been a mission here, they haven't been honoring the restrictions that were imposed on it. Now, whether that was intentional or not, I don't think is wrong, what's wrong with it is they weren't playing by the rules, and they shouldn't be rewarded for that, they should be called to account for that. As far as workday parking, as your professional staff has pointed out, uh, very, very different considerations there. The prior parking studies assume that restaurant and hotel would not be all coming out there in the middle of the, uh, what they call the rush hour. Uh, to the extent they're talking about doing that, uh, I think at a minimum, you need a new, uh, traffic study. Uh, I did suggest that, uh, in my memo, uh, Sunday, that, uh, or maybe I didn't, but, but the temporary. Daytime parking might bridge the years needed to bring online and expanded parking lots to the west. Uh, I heard that the, uh, university is looking for two hundred parking spots, uh, for construction workers. Conceivably, you could go to the university and say, we've got some space here, they could house some of your construction workers. But in return, we would like permission for our event center overflow parking to be able to use forty-three, lot forty-three, Kinnick Stadium at night. Uh, which stands there empty, um, so I think there's a great possibility here for, um, uh, creative solutions. Uh, to the problems that have been created, as I say, by, uh, event center activities and perhaps some business misestablishations. The last point I wanna make is, is kind of process points, and Mike knows I like to make them. Um, at the, as Chair of the Zoning Commission, when this, uh, university late partners came before us. Uh, I told commissioners three things, keep your mind open until all information has been presented. Disclose the substance of contacts you have of all participants outside the meetings, and give reasoning behind your goal. Uh, these comments were based on lessons learned, I think, with, uh, OUP. Uh, I believe that the members of the commission did a very, very good job. But definitely, all sorts of pros and cons, and a number of businesses, I think, they made OUP or the ULP a better project. So, and I also think finally that residents felt that their concerns had been heard. In contrast, here the matter is being brought forward in the summer, there's a great sense of rush and haste. I would suggest it's not football season, striving this, is that the developers have ingratiated themselves in one-on-one conversations with the members of this council. Directly or indirectly, they have a sense that they've got the votes, and they can go with it, they're not sure after November. Um, and so if members of this council don't stand for reelection, they're gonna start all over again in January, trying to butter up. Uh, counselors to get them to, um, uh, commit, in effect, ahead of time, uh, to a project. Um, so, I strongly encourage you, uh, to send twenty-three, twenty-one and twenty-three, twenty-four. Uh, parking rentals and increased parking spaces to the zoning commission, but further development recommendations back to you. Uh, it certainly increases the risk, if you don't, you decide now, the things are gonna pop up down the line that you didn't think about. Now, you're all bright people, uh, but a lot of people can frequently see things, uh, that individuals cannot. Uh, so, you know, to avoid, you're finding yourselves down the line saying, well, that's something we really hadn't thought about, and we voted to approve these changes. Uh, I would encourage you to let the zoning commission develop this, we heard from both zoning commissioners Panther, uh, and Yegi, that. They can do this, they can take this on, they're up to the task. Perhaps as importantly, it will go a long way towards dispelling the suspicion some folks have, that this is a done deal. And nothing they say will ever cause you to reconsider the views previously formed on the basis of conversations with developers, and fail to mention the negative aspects of the things you're seeking. Uh, sending it to the zoning commission can result in additional relevant considerations, and brought back to you by decision. You're gonna be the final deciders, but zoning commission proceedings may increase the likelihood that your decision. Ultimately will be based on full consideration of all relevant factors, and perhaps as importantly, I assure members of our community. Uh, that the requests are viewed as sound by fresh eyes of folks that haven't been privately, privately lobbied ahead of time. In one-on-one oral conversations, thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Uh, the next person I have on the list is Chris Lozzy. Hi, Chris, welcome.
Hello, Louise, thank you, hi folks, uh, Chris Lozzy, three three eight Cozer. Um, I haven't been at prior meetings, so I may be a little uncertain about. Uh, what I wanted to talk about briefly is the green space along Melrose, and I'm not real sure. Where that is at the moment, kind of what, it, it sounds like maybe it's not getting paid, but it might be used for something. Uh, so I'm a little unsure, but what I wanted to suggest was that, um. I know the city has been working on trying to beautify the Melrose corridor. And that this, uh, particular location is really the eastern entryway into our city. And I was just down there today, and that entire lot has nothing on it. Not a flower, not a bush, not a tree, not a ornamental grass, nothing. Um, so it's kind of stark, uh, and yet it could be something that could be worked into things to make this. A little bit more attractive, uh, I'm not sure why nothing was ever put on it. Perhaps it has just been used for, I guess I've seen pictures of tents for beer selling and maybe. Things for parking cars, but maybe that was a thought all along, but, um. Once the hotel went in, we did lose a bunch of trees, that was my understanding, way back when, it's gonna stay there. These big, beautiful trees, we lost them, they're gone, but we could at least improve this area. So as you're working through things, I think it would be really nice to be able to. Get some cooperation to improve and make that a more attractive area coming into the city. Which would include, I think, parking cars there for paving, so, thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next I have Nick Herbald.
Hello, Nick Herbald.
Welcome.
Like getting the old gang back together, it's good to see you all. Um, the previous two speakers really covered everything I was gonna talk about, I mean, I think they did a tremendous job. You know, July fourth gatherings in the community, I felt like a lot of the people I was congregating with. Had a lot of these thoughts too, you know, in terms of like, we want Melrose to look better, we're trying to work on aesthetics. You know, to put a parking lot right there, I think was very much frowned upon, um, I really like the ideas, Chris's ideas about, you know, that space could. You know, some trees on it or some landscaping that might also prevent people from parking on there appropriately, if that's the issue. Um, there's also, I think, you know, the discussion about, you've got Kinnick filled up by workers until four thirty, and then it's empty. And you've got the hotel needing space later in the day, and then the hotel is empty during the day, when you need the, the parkers for the. You know, for the, the hospital, um, seemed like kind of an obvious fit, that there'd be more communication, I don't know, maybe there has been, I know I've, I've talked to some of you about that. Um, as to whether that has been looked into already, um, but the one thing I would say about the commercial parking is that. I think it could be a little bit of a slippery slope, um, if it were a long-term thing, I like the idea of maybe, you know, one-year trial run or something. Because, you know, when I was on council the first time, I know there were a lot of rentals that had commercial parking. And it really was unsightly, it was something that, um. You know, Stan and the police chief at the time, and I went around and looked at, there's a lot of non-compliance, I think that if. You know, if the hotel's able to do it, I, I think the next question might be, are the landlords back? Asking, can we now park again, commercial parking in our yards? Um, I haven't necessarily paid attention every meeting, but I don't think that's been allowed again, well, it hasn't been allowed yet, I haven't seen it. Um, as much, at, at least in, in the community, so, um, I think that would be, you know, again, I, I don't think I have a lot to add to the, the first two speakers. I think they did a great job, uh, in terms of what they said, but I would just, I guess, yeah, be a little bit concerned that. Um, kind of like Professor Bauer said, anything that is added there, I don't know that OUP would wanna do it, but, but I think it, you know, maybe the. The commercial, um, landlords, the, the landlords that have rental houses down there. Um, I guess last thing, you know, I live on Melrose, so I, I, I do want it to be slightly aesthetically pleasing. I would like the traffic to be under control. You know, I just came from baseball practice, which is where I had to get out of my driveway right, right after I was done with work for the day. It's not easy to get out of my driveway during that time of day, to add to it, you know, not only add the cars, but. You also have the cars, the drivers who are kind of frustrated because they've been waiting, so the odds of them letting you in without needing to budge in front of them. Um, becomes a concern also, so, appreciate all your work and your time you put into this. Um, I really do hope this can be something where we can be kind of decisive and maybe shut down some of these things that don't seem like they're. Good ideas, because we do have other things, you know, in the community we can look at, um, you know, even the Swisher track. I went down that the other day and didn't realize there were trees all over it, so I was out, you know, trying to pull trees out of the Swisher track. I mean, there's a lot of things that the city could, you know, potentially put resources into, um, that would help the citizens a lot more than, than spending a lot of time on it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Nick, I don't have anyone else signed up, is there someone who would like to speak in the audience still? Okay, thank you.
Um, Mike Rich, twenty-dollar court, um, I, I read Pat's, um. Thing that he put out, and the one thing I have a question on is he mentions nine oh one, nine oh three, and nine oh five Melrose. And to my knowledge, they don't own nine oh three Melrose, that's owned by Rex and Judy Hamilton. And they couldn't purchase it either because of the current agreement, uh, they can't go buy any more property. The other thing I'd like to address is the football parking issue and stuff, I've been over there at twenty-dollar court for, I think, ten, eleven years. And you see about everything, you know, when Mike Flom owned the property, they parked three hundred cars, and it was always a mess, especially, you know, when you'd have the. Have the bigger games, and if they don't have some way of controlling this, uh, football parking by running it and, and filling in the spots. They're gonna have people just pulling their parts, it's gonna be garbage all over, it'd be towing cars, you're blocking traffic. And we all saw what Mike Flom on the property, he would not let people in there, for I believe it was three hours before a game started. You'd have cars backed up in the morning, uh, all the way from that bridge to sunset. And the other thing I'd like to say, you know, is that, seems like we go after the, the hotel people here. And they're a, a commercial, uh, business trying to make ends meet and, and money, yeah, we have. Person selling football parking, have been doing it for years on city property. Bruce Moyer, when he owned nine oh five Melrose, he sold, uh, parking spots, they didn't even own the property on the railroad. And, and this is a proven fact, and this, and some of this stuff, on, on, where parking's going on city property is still going on. But yeah, we're coming after these people, so I, I, my suggestion is, let them get through this football parking, we're, we're drawing near. You know, to sell us something out, you know, how many parking spots were lost? With, uh, them closing down that lot, and, you know, on the north end of Kinnick, was it eight hundred and fifty spots? People are gonna be looking for spots, and they're gonna, they park anywhere, and I, and I've seen it every, every year. So I think we ought to help out these people, they're paying a lot of tax money, they've helped out the community, not only university high school. Anybody that needs help, and, and ask Jim and Michelle and Greg, they're more than willing to help, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, uh, would anyone else from the audience like to speak? Are there any hands up that I, I can't see?
No, not right now.
Well, would anyone like to speak that's on Zoom? Tonight? Mary, would you like to speak tonight? Are there others on Zoom tonight? Mike?
No, this is Mary, but I think the people that spoke already, um, Chris and Pat illustrated my thoughts, so. I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, Mary, and is there anybody else on Zoom that would like to speak? I don't see everybody, but, okay. So, everyone in attendance got to speak on this, or on this subject of the hotel. So we'll go now to, uh, council consideration and council discussion.
Mayor Bronn, it's.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay.
I move that the council revert consideration of all the hotel matters to the zoning commission for review and comment.
Okay, there's a motion by Lisa to move all matters to zoning commission. Um, is that, basically, that's it, uh, is there a second?
It's second that that's worth the discussion.
Okay, second by Tim. Okay, discussion.
So what I would say is, I definitely hear what Pat Bauer brought to the table here, that. We've had one-on-one conversations, I, I have not, but some people have. They haven't been in the sunshine, I'm not making any kind of accusations, but there's a perception. By the community. This is something we don't talk about much, because we don't have controversial issues with us. Steve can talk about sunshine and transparency and perception, and how important it is. For our residents to trust the government, if you would like to say anything, and we're done, but I just think. Sending this to zoning also gets five additional minds working on this. Just like, uh, it's already been said and echoed several times. And was said quite well by Sam Loverman in the email that he sent. I haven't, I didn't think of many of the things he brought up, I haven't heard anyone on the council bring those things up in. One-on-one conversations or meetings. I think there are unintended consequences, which is a favorite phrase of Pat Bauer from the old days. When we would come to meetings and caution us on how we were about to run over the edge of the cliff through the rye, I guess. But. I just think we don't see, we, we haven't thought of everything. We haven't thought of every unintended consequence of our decisions, um. I think the commission has said that they have time. They have said they would like to look at it. And I think they could give it a really good look. They recommend we decide. Their input will do nothing but help us. And I think we do need to slow it down because there is a public perception that we're rushing this through. But it's a done we are and I don't like that. I think we need to give the public more confidence and their city government's willingness to gather perspectives other than our own. To make well-considered decisions. Cause that confidence in our city government is very important. And Steve, I would like you to speak a little bit about. The sunshine, transparency. And how public perception will be skewed, no matter, no matter what we're doing. How how that. Is that a.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, I think it's important. There's obviously legal requirements and part I know the council on the. Or is it permission to the city, University of the Heights of all this. There are um, there are practices in, you know, in the city. All of the. I guess I would call them major. Developments that have come before the council. Follow, not not identical to that by any means, but but similar to that. Uh, with with the council asking zoning commissions to consider things and making force recommendations to the council and then the council take action. Lots of those, several of them, uh. You know, the zoning commission saw it one way and the council saw it another way. It's not always, uh. Will do what you say, but there was an opportunity for people to give in, but they won't let it open for. Check at the commission level and the council level. I know there's times where people have said, this is a legal department, but people have said, well. It takes, it takes a while for to get the community's attention, you know, like people have lives, they're doing their thing. And the zoning commission will get the things to go about, so you can hear it, they'll have a duty of consequence. But that that general process, uh. Zoning commission, council, sometimes, sometimes more than once in the same development, but that was followed with the. With the the grand new court uh, proposals, uh, which go back quite a ways. And and but the big one, the one I think is the most controversial was never built. But it was proven. Uh, and then the uh, the Burfield Court Development. Uh, the University Athletic Club, uh, proposals that are not approved and were not built. Um, this building, O U P. For everyone, there's a lot of process there and the hotel itself. And this is, I think, Jim and George Greg and Michelle and and Pat Bauer also. There were needed, so that's, that's the history.
Yeah, I think there'd be, I mean, I think we'd be in better position to negotiate this and. They'll put up, found themselves in a bit of a hole here, um, you know, proposed paving along Melrose that. That stirred up the hornets' nest and. And then surface several areas where the agreement's not being met already. And that ends up. Uh, creating a situation where we guys in the road trust the most public. And doubt there any future agreement's gonna be upheld. So. That that creates a challenge. Still, I empathize with Greg, Jim, and Michelle. You have a business, you're trying to run, you're trying to help a pride, and we need to listen and we need to help you get to a solution that helps you be successful. Cause the last thing we want is an abandoned building in our city. So, we need to take that seriously and not just cast it out on anything to say and treat you as the enemy. But I don't think we need to rush into this. And we don't even have a plan. For for the parking. So I can't support the last measure in just approving two hundred and fifty spaces. Cause that seems like a green light to have cause to build two hundred and fifty spaces, whatever the case. And I would never support building uh, in a green space on Melrose or diminishing the buffer. On the west side of the park. But I think there's ways you could probably gain twenty, thirty spaces. By getting created without parking lots laid out, still maintaining all the necessary landscape buffers and all of that. And we get a little part, more parking to support the added use that you have. As far as the first measure, if it were just the game, game day parking. I'd be in support of that because it it seems crazy. Like you were saying, there there's no way you can keep the tailgaters off of that, right? So you might as well be gaining some income on those days. I'm not sure why that rule came up in the first place, but. When every other property in the city can have game day parking, it seems like a good owner is required, you know. However, the. Uh, the daily parking. That is a slippery slope because, right now you say it's twenty parking spaces that. If we just approve that as a blanket, that could end up being a hundred, two hundred, then then you have a potential traffic issue, which we wouldn't. See how that shakes out and see what the details are or trigger the other speculations and then go over a certain line. I think you need the Mother's Day and Easter signs out there, because you're a commercial entity. That's pulled off the street. We need to. Some way to promote that those special events exist, so I would support that. Now I support parking on nine oh five for game day, but. That's for my install.
Any other comments? This motion's on the table. Uh, about uh, going to zoning commission.
Yeah, well, actually, before I go there. I don't know if there's anyone I need to apologize to for my comments last meeting. I think it sounded like maybe I offended some people with. What I said as far as. I don't know, otherizing the eastsiders or whatever, everyone east of Sunset, and that certainly wasn't my intention, so. If that was, you know, what was communicated, I apologize. Um. I think what I was, that wasn't my intent. Anyway, I'm just trying to. Identify the commercial area on the east border of University Heights. Anyway. Uh, as far as, as far as taking it to zoning, I think. I don't know that this is the issue that I, well, at least. Yeah, I don't really know that this is an issue that I feel like it needs to go there. I mean, if this was a brand-new development, we're talking about something from the ground up. I feel like the stakes are a little higher. Um, with something like this, we're really just talking about letting a commercial entity use their. Facility in a commercial way, and so I don't feel like the stakes are too high. Um, as far as the. Uh. Commercial parking, the daily parking, if you will, um. You know, I'm a little conflicted. I don't want to create a problem, but. I also know that the hotel is not interested in creating a problem for themselves either. I mean. Every one of those people who pays for a daily parking spot is gonna have to. Decide if they want to wait in line to leave, and the hotel's gonna have to decide how many cars do they want to sell spots to, because. You know, they have to lease the hotel tenants as well. And so. It's a, in some ways, you know, it's a little bit of a self-regulating thing, I think, in my mind, as far as that goes, but. I guess going back to the management hand, I'm not. Right now, I don't, I don't see that we need to send this to zoning, um. For what's in front of us. I think, I think if if Greg and Jim can come up with a plan that Ryan approves and is happy with. And, you know, and we can get that done in a timely way that gives everyone ample time to. Review and consider it, then I'm 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 on board with it.
Any other comments by council? We have a motion on the table and uh, is council ready to vote? Okay, that's hard. Okay. So the motion is to uh, send this to the zoning commission. All of, all of this, this issue, the hotel issues to the zoning commission. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All opposed, say no.
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 Okay. You uh. You might have to raise your hand for Mike if you voted no. So what's the count, Mike?
Uh, four one. Motion fails.
Okay, thank you. So let's continue uh, council discussion on uh. First thing uh, is twenty-three, twenty-one. And it's approving. Uh, both game day parking and. Uh, daily parking. As Steve explained.
So, it's Lisa, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but I do have another motion.
Okay, sure, Lisa.
Thank you, ma'am. Um. I'm fine with having discussion here, but my my motion would be. I moved that the council, council defer the hotel issues to the August meeting or even September meeting. For a decision. When more people are back from summer travels, we have more time to gather. Complete information and more time to get the additional public input that was mentioned.
Okay, so the motions by Lisa to. Defer all the four things to August or September meeting. When more people will be back from vacation. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Bobby, I think. Okay, discussion.
Well, I'll start again. Um. I don't know why we would need to get this done immediately, get this done today. Again, I think. There's that question of public trust. There's the question of getting the word out. There's the question of. People are slow, you know. This is our first in-person meeting. People aren't really, they are not aware that we have an issue like this. And I think it is an important issue to people. They were very involved in twenty seventeen. And I sympathize with you, I do, but you did come in twenty seventeen and Jim. I have a very clear picture of you standing right here. And telling us hotels are slow to get started, that. We don't want to do tailgating because we want to have a high-class hotel. That we want to be good neighbors. You you know, you made all of these assurances and we have made concessions to you. And I do think this, you know, for. Better or worse, this is stirring up some ill will. Towards the hotel. None of us want that. You don't want it, I don't want it. I have supported you and you know that. I just can't support rushing into this and getting it done. Without more people being aware in the community and having a chance to speak. I would ask that the council would understand that.
Any other discussion?
We've only, you know, we've heard about this. At the June meeting. We had one June meeting. Not very many people were aware that this was, well, because it wasn't on the agenda. Then we had a special meeting when we were supposed to be. Uh, I mean, a great special meeting. It got. It appeared on the agenda. People weren't necessarily aware of that. It was supposed to be discussed in this meeting. I think we we do have the appearance of rushing for this, and I don't see why we would do that without considering. Again, I'm gonna refer you to Stan's email. Read that earlier and chew on it a lot. We don't see everything, you know. And, you know, Steve has already talked to us about the history of deliberation in University Heights. We have always been very careful to make sure. People are aware, people have a chance to sit about. And people did care about this, about. So, that's what I will have to say. I guess one more thing, you know. A comment that someone made. A year ago, we went door-to-door advertising in the citywide garage sale, you know, something that everybody store. We haven't done anything like that. For an issue of this level of importance, so.
Would anyone else like to speak on council? You know, there's just this mi- second delay, so I'm sorry. I I kind of missed it, but. The motion on the table is to defer these items. Twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four till August or September meeting. Um, is council ready to vote? All in favor to defer to August or September meeting? Um, say aye.
Aye.
Council who wants to, um. Uh, not defer, say.
Before I vote, can I just state publicly that, I mean, I I appreciate the. Um, the idea of not wanting to rush it through, and I just want to state for the record, like. I, that's not, certainly not my intention at all whatsoever with this, and I don't. I don't intend to try to sneak something by or. You know, I I can't, I I've called every single person I can think of in my, you know, radius to figure out where they're at and. You know, so just want to say. That's not, if it seems like that's anyone, certainly not the intent, and it's just purely. Here's an issue that we've been presented with. And let's do what we can to make a decision for the. So, I don't know, I know it's kind of out of order for your vote, but that's.
I thought we were on to the first one, and your motion was to defer to first one.
No, my my motion is. Is this okay, Steve? You're the president.
Sure.
My motion is to just defer decisions on it. We we're not sending it to the zoning commission for additional. Input and thoughts. So, let's, let's. Disfer all of these issues and make sure the town are aware. Of what's going on. I'm not, I mean, I'm not making accusations that there is a perception. I mean, what is the rush? Just want to hurry up and get something done and possibly make a bad decision. Not be careful enough to think about everything and, you know, meeting conference center. That turns into a five-hundred-person venue. Because we didn't think it grew. Man, I just, I'm just saying, I think we should. We should be careful. These are not fluffy little decisions. This isn't a club. This is city government. We need to get things careful in little age. You don't, you know.
Does everyone under, on council understand the motion? Would anyone like to make more comments? I'm not trying to rush you. I'm just trying to. Move the meeting along if you don't have discussion. Any further discussion? Steve, would you want to repeat the motion?
Yes, I think. Yeah, I think the motion is to defer. Any action on all four of the resolutions before the council, like twenty-one, twenty-three. any action on all four of the resolutions before the council, like twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-one through twenty-three, twenty-four. If we're action on those until at least the August meeting. Then Mayor, I would suggest you start the vote over. Just because I'm not really sure what you were about.
Okay, right. Uh, I'm just going to ask again if there's any discussion. Any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Yes.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
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 Okay, Mike, can you figure out the numbers there?
Motion fails three, two.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll continue council discussion on any item twenty-one. I, I started with twenty-one with the game day and with the, uh, everyday, daily parking.
So I, I'll make another motion, please, that we separate I, the, uh, game day parking out and the maybe we can't leave this if we would separate game day parking from the daily parking.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion by, uh, Lisa to separate day, game day parking and daily parking. Is there a second?
There is a.
Okay, a second by, I think, Bobby.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Discussion. Does anyone want to discuss this? On council?
They're, they're two different things. They need to be separated is all that I would say. Considered separately.
Yeah, I tend to agree. Also, separation between the tailgate which I have absolutely no problem with. Again, everyone else in University Heights has that same luxury. I certainly am not going to discriminate against the business for game day parking. I do have a hang-up on the, the, the daily parking. I I think that's a big monster that, but again, I don't know how it would affect us. As a council, I think at the end of the day, it's going to be laying at Greg's feet as well, that he's going to have to deal with unhappy customers that have no place to park if, you know, for whatever reason, the events in the afternoon instead of in the evening. I guess they're going to be knocking on his door, not mine, and I'm okay with that. But I, I think it would be kind of a good idea to split the two up a little bit. I don't have a problem with that.
Any other discussion?
I'm splitting them apart. That makes more difference to me.
I, I'm sorry, I don't know who's speaking.
That was, that was Stephanie.
Stephanie.
Oh, that's Stephanie. Sorry, Stephanie, I could you repeat what you said again?
Said I don't have a problem with splitting them apart.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, so the motion, if I'm correct, Steve, is to separate game day parking and daily parking. Alright, so they would they would be two different resolutions, correct?
That's right.
Okay, so is council ready to vote? All in favor of the separation, say aye. Uh, those opposed, say no. Okay, Mike, will you do the count for me? It kind of got.
Motion, motion carries five, zero.
Thank you. Um, okay. We have them separated. Would council like to talk about? I think what, twenty-three, twenty-one, Steve, would that be game day parking then?
Yeah, well, so what I would suggest is that you, uh, if someone on the council wants to move adoption of one or the other, I would suggest that you do that and call it twenty-three, twenty-one A.
Well, I'll move to adopt twenty-three, twenty-one A. Uh, football parking.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Bobby and second by, I think Steph? Stephanie?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, discussion. This is discussion.
Okay. Yeah, all, please, Lisa, just say, I think there possibly are some things that you can do that might be a little more creative than just tailgating, but if we're clear that this is tailgating on the parking lot, not on the grass, is that correct?
That's right.
And available the current parking spaces and if we approve thousand more parking spaces, I can tailgate on all of them, so just be
That's right, that's what
The major exaggeration.
That's what was requested. Current parking, not on the grass, except what the PUD says. Those, those provisions could be amended if the council wants momentum or, you know, at some point, but that's, that's the request.
I got a question. Is there, um, if we were to, is it a zoning change that, you know, cars on my grass or game day? Is there, is it a zoning thing to allow them to park? Cars on the grass lot for game day? That's a zoning change because that, that has to be an increase in the number of spots, whatever. That can't be just a you know. Parking on green spaces.
Yeah, I mean, I think, yes, I think it would require that.
Good, that's great.
And it does prevent the landscaping that was brought up by several people to improve that law.
So we're discussing whether or not to allow them to park on game day or.
That's correct, right, Steve?
Yes, correct.
You want to clarify that again, just because there's a question and I don't want council to be confused about this?
You bet. So the, the motion that is before the council is to adapt what's, what will be known as Resolution twenty-three, twenty-one A to, uh, remove the restriction in the PUD development agreement that prohibits game day parking at the hotel. Which means if, if this is adopted, the hotel may have, may sell or have game day parking on its existing lot, its existing spaces, not on the grass.
Okay, further discussion by council?
I guess I will just explain that I'm going to vote no because that was the basis of some people supporting the hotel in the first place, Jim, right? And, and I don't support you, but I'm going to hold you to your
Are we allowed to say here?
Yes, they can ask you a question and you can comment, yeah. Could you go to the podium? Thank you.
Why is now Lisa is talking to us when I don't feel like we're allowed to talk? Like, can I respond?
Yes, you can respond.
I want to counsel to know that that the zoning they need to strike the zoning, um, change of the two, nine-sixty to two-fifteen. That prevents me parking on the grass. And I can't park on the grass because I don't have that done by football season. Who's going to police that lot? I mean, it's going to be chaos over there. It's going to be my property. And I guess what I would say is, is there any way that it can allow me to park cars on that grass because if you don't, then it, and I don't, and hypothetically, I don't hear, you know, Ryan Westen or Steve Westen on the, on the change in the, in the parking upgrade or they don't want to put the minimum or the, you know, change it to less than on the PV then and when football comes around, I that lot's going to be empty. It's just going to be, it's going to be a huge headache for us because people will just you know, camp out there and and, uh, and, and use it and we will have we won't get any anything. They'll be using our ground and I won't be able to stop it unless I want to pay someone to, to stop it or just I'm asking, you know, council to to reconsider the, the grass spot. You know, maybe a an option to let me park on football Saturdays on, on the grass. I mean, everyone else in town needs to do it and you're telling me that I can't? It's just this, it's, it's, it's hard.
Well, we, yeah, so if you think that one, say, that's not the request that I understood you made when you sent the email saying this is what we want to change. Because what you just said requires several other changes. Some of the council can't do it, but it can't do it back. It is the required change of zoning, but instead that's going to take the usual zoning process. I'm not, I'm, I'm not certain. I'm not even very sure. But I, I've seen some aerial images that somebody sent me that shows what appears to be parking spaces that are marked on the grass that I'm not sure is on the hotel's property. I mean, the property that was on nine oh one LLC, it looks to me like it might be over on a railroad's property. And I don't think the railroads even let you park cars. That, I think it's sort of the opposite. So there are a variety of issues that are raised by parking on grass that in my mind aren't triggered or implicated when you say, hey, can we change this in the PUD development agreement to take out no game day parking? So I'm saying is you're introducing a bunch of issues that are at least new to me and they require some thought and some discussion. Um, and we, and I, I do want to say, when you say, well, everybody else in town needs to do it, they only get to do it on their own property. And I, and I'll go back to saying, I'm not sure about that. Maybe I'm wrong about the hotel's property and where they line things out. Maybe the aerial image I saw isn't what I thought I was seeing. Maybe it isn't parking spaces lined out. So I'm just saying that it, I think it requires additional consideration and discussion.
I'm not hiding anything. I just think that my relationship with the railroad if I park on their grass they want to come and tell me to get off their grass and I'll get off their grass. Just like you guys tell me to get off your property, I'll get off your property. I have a license to use the property if, and, and I'm, I'm trying my best to, to run the business as best as I can. And I just feel like everyone's trying to hold me back from that. It's, it's hard. But yes, we do park cars on that grass and I, and I, and I and I've spoken to three different people in the last couple of weeks from the road. And they know what I do. And, and it's, it's, it's not it, it's not if, if they want to enforce me to do it, then they will. I, I just don't, I just don't see why the city is constantly trying to, to to stop us from running our business. It's hard.
So just to clarify, Steve, you said that parking on the grass on their property would require a zoning change?
That's right. And again, the zoning change, the PUD development agreement, that's right.
Because it's a green space, is that why?
Um, well, I think it's several things, given what Greg just said. If they, if they are parking on the railroad's property from the standpoint of the city attorney, I'm not comfortable saying the city, well, the railroad is not giving them any grace. It's okay here. That's not, that's not what the hotel developers said when they asked for approval. They said, we've got an easement from the hotel. Here's our easement. It's in writing. It's recorded. You know, you can't develop on somebody else's property. Obviously, they did it right. They were granted that permission. If, if the hotel or the railroad wants to amend that agreement then the city council might want to consider the request. They can park on the railroad property too because the railroad says it's okay. But I haven't seen that and I haven't heard.
What kind of things can you do with green space? Can you put tents on or launchers or, I mean, I, I don't know.
Yeah, I, well, if it relates to the parking requirements more than anything, I think you probably did put launcher, but I'm intense. Rather depends on what they look like and how long, how long they're there, you know.
But, but not porta potters.
I didn't think so.
Where you're from?
Oh, yes.
I just would ask you to clarify. I was under the impression that the green space had been dedicated.
Well, it, it, that's a good point, which is a further issue. Like you said, this gets into issues that, that I didn't know the hotel was asking for. That is what I got was say, take this language out. And that's how I drafted the resolution. Uh, the point is, so, so when, when the hotel, so there's, you know, it's not the most complicated thing in the world, but it's not the most straightforward. There was a CVA about changing zoning. There was a PUD, uh, there was a zoning change. There was a PUD, uh, to approve the development. There was also what's called the subdivision. Okay, so, so the hotel owners took various parcels and said, we want to make this, uh, we want to subsidize this. And as a part of the subdivision, the city the owners dedicated certain, uh, land, uh, to the city or right of way, like street and sidewalk and also for green space. Uh, and, and so frankly, I would have to look at the dedication for green space to determine what changes would need to be made, like park on the green space and whether they can be. I, I'm just not prepared to count on that right now.
But was it dedicated to, is it a public space?
I think it was.
Okay, okay. And the CCA says the developer shall be responsible in perpetuity for maintaining all open space, green space and public space. And so Greg keeps talking about, it's his property. My understanding is that, no, this is the city's property. Or at least whatever that dedication means and that, that, that they've said they're not doing. And my wife pointed out, you know, if you're parking there, you can't be putting up nice landscape and you can't be putting up shrubs and trees. Um, you know, if you put up shrubs and trees, presumably you can't be selling alcohol or selling food. So this idea that it's his property.
Basically, we talked to what's basically so the whole lot.
Nine oh nine.
Nine oh nine was not, we, we dedicated to give the ten-foot sidewalk. That's all we dedicated for the ten-foot sidewalk. It has to be a side. We didn't dedicate the entire lot.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't speak for that. I'm not saying that you're wrong about that, Greg. I just don't know. I know, I know, it's a good question.
I interrupted him because it, it, it's, 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 he's talking about something that raises me to the power.
So you don't have that information tonight, right, Steve?
Right, so, so I, what I understand Greg, the hotel owners to be saying is, we want to tailgate not just on our lot, but also on grass. And I'm saying that council really can't approve that tonight. It's not on your agenda for one thing. Uh, and it's going to take, I'm going to have to evaluate that request, see what you, what you will need to do if you want to do it. But that's not what twenty-three, twenty-one A says. Twenty-three, twenty-one A says the hotel can have game day parking on its existing game parking lot within the way it's striped for a hundred and ninety, no more than a hundred and ninety-six spaces.
So if council wanted, it could go on the, uh, August eighth agenda? If that's
I'd like to add that, you know, something else we, after after the hotel was being built and they put that sidewalk in the Gemini dedicated that space after, you know, we, that's just another example of us helping and wanting to help the city. So it just, we dedicated, so we took away from our property. So they could put the ten-foot sidewalk in there. So they could put the ten foot sidewalk in there, so it should be. And, uh, we worked with Josiah when we actually built, uh, built, built the driveway, so we would, so the city wouldn't have to do it twice.
Let me just clarify. I, I'm pretty sure what you're talking about is what's used to call the beer bottle house up front. That lot. When that was going through, there's a project called Vision Project. It was gonna open up Melrose. And at that time, we dedicated ten feet of that lot. So that they could expand the sidewalk in. And that was, I think that's the dedication you're talking about. But, and yeah, that exactly. You guys own that. We don't own that. The, any grass that we're talking about is on our lot. There used to be a house there and that's. That house is gone now and it's just a grass lot. I mean, whatever we do there, whether it's. Parking or we're, we're ever allowed to build anything there. Yeah, there'll be trees and landscaping around it, but right now it's just. It's a, uh, a green space. And the dedication is in the front of that. I mean, between the street and the sidewalk. And the sidewalk is already expanded in where, where our lot is. And, and then, uh, it's gonna continue on down Melrose later, later on in the vision project.
Thank you.
It's a can legally approved parking on the grass tonight.
Correct. And there, I should clarify, when you said that could that go on the August, uh, uh, eight agenda, I said, yes. Part of it can. If it requires zoning change, it's gonna have to require a public hearing. So that setting the public hearing could be on that agenda.
Okay.
Where are we at? What?
We still have your resolution on the table.
So, what, what, we're motioning to vote or what do we?
I, I'm, I'm ready to vote. Everybody else is.
I think we're approving parking on the, parking.
Game day.
Yes, game day, birthday on our own.
Yes.
This is twenty-three, twenty-one A. And, uh, I'll have Steve repeat it, please. So there's confusion. Yes.
The motion is to approve what's now known as twenty-three, twenty-one A. And I will revise that in writing, uh, but, but it would, uh, remove. The prohibition. For, uh, game, game day parking. At the hotel, which as we discussed, means that the hotel, if approved, could park. On game day, tailgating, whatever you wanna call it, on the existing parking lot. Within the existing spaces, no more than a hundred and ninety-six.
Council's ready to vote. This is a roll call vote. Mike, will you start the roll call?
Yes. Don?
I.
Moore?
No.
Schroeder?
I.
Scott?
I.
Who else?
I.
Motion carries four one.
Okay, and now we're gonna talk about the daily parking. And Steve, how do you wanna call that resolution?
Well, I think it's several is, is of the mind too. I think you should move adoption of, uh, twenty-one. Excuse me, twenty-three, twenty-one B, which would remove the prohibition. For daily park.
Okay, so, discussion.
Yeah. Did you hear that, Mayor?
No.
Yeah, I just, this is Tim. I asked if I could motion that that item is passed on to the zoning commission.
Oh, you should bet that item of every, of daily parking be passed to the zoning commission.
Yeah.
Is that right? Okay, is second.
I'll second.
Okay, second by Lisa. Uh, discussion.
What, what is the, so if we send that to them, what's the result we're gonna get back from the zoning commission? In terms of the impact that, like, that Ryan and his team wouldn't be able to give us. Like, if we, if we didn't vote on this until next week, after we know exactly how many spots. That, that the developers are going to propose, Ryan's gonna look at the plan, we're gonna know a number of how many spots. Then we can see the impact or Ryan can see the impact of, okay, like you said, is it twenty commercial parking spots? Is it a hundred commercial parking spots? What is the traffic impact? And then, and then we can make an educated, you know, informed decision at that point based on the actual, like. The game day parking thing, I mean, it's, it's just, it's all kind of crazy regardless. So, and it's, that, that is the nature of the beast. With the commercial parking, it's different. It doesn't seem to be a problem right now with what's going on there in terms of traffic flow congestion. Uh, so my question is. What is the zoning commission going to tell us that Ryan, Terry, you're, you wanna be able to tell us?
Yeah. I don't know. Do you still do a study, traffic study, Ryan, and it goes on? You, you mean, you're? I mean, I guess, I think we've heard, right, Steve?
I, I mean, you can't, I mean, in my mind, it becomes a lot of direct, yeah, I think I would, Ryan would do that.
So I could see my that end. Yeah.
So the email from Stan also suggested we. You're to in, to approve either increase in commercial activity or commercial activity. I strongly believe it should be done by. A special exception. It can be reviewed for compliance on a yearly basis. I'm guessing that's the kind of thing. That the zoning commission might want to discuss or do that, along with the traffic study, along with.
Hmm. My hesitation on, on that is, I, I don't, I would. You know, as, as a, as a hotel's trying to operate a business and trying to plan and, and, and develop, you know. Business plans for the year and whatever they would do, my hesitation in that would be that. With a small town like we have, will. I mean. That it would just be a pendulum swinging and they're, they can't have any sort of consistency and operate their business. Would, I, I, yeah, I don't know. I, I'm just. Yeah, I'm thinking about that, I guess. You know, you, one, one zoning commission, you know, I, I think it's one thing, another thinks another thing. They get it from a year, they don't get it from it. What? Yeah, I, I mean, it's not, you're right. It's not unlike. But I think in my mind, a lot of the unknowns are gone and that changes things, I think. Um, so.
I think we just create new unknowns.
If there were more specifics around when parking release, it's four o'clock or four, four o'clock and we knew about what the numbers were. There's a study to say you can go up to this number or you create a traffic issue in the number and set a parameter around that number and timeframe. We don't know enough at this table. I don't think we'll prove that. Blankets. But that's why I'm saying, even the zoning commission, Brian.
Ryan, and it was, yeah, and if you can engage the M P O, and again, it's, 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 the, it's, the hotel has gotta be a little self-regulating. They can't shoot themselves in the foot as far as selling too many parking spots and people are waiting, you know, for an hour and a half, but they have no incentive to do that.
Right.
As far as I can see, but, you know, I don't, I even think that would be worth the money, you know, that they're getting for that parking spot to have. You know, negative reviews on the hotel. Clearly, they're trying to do a good job running the hotel and that's a value then. And so. If, if, I feel like if, if they can come up with a good plan that Ryan's on board with and maximizes the number of parking spots that they can have. And we can run that by the M P O or whoever will help us make an, an informed decision, then we should try that.
The number of. Totally separate from the. Number of parking spaces that they increased in. It's a number of people coming out of that lot at one time, right? So we can figure out when it becomes a problem. Which could have set a parameter around the number of parking spots. Yeah, they. Have, yeah.
Yeah, I guess, yes. There's maybe, I mean, I think this resolution is just whether they can sell results. And there's also that other resolution that's talking about, can they increase number, right? So, so those two things kind of impact each other.
Yeah.
Mayor, Mayor Fromm?
Yes.
Got a couple of things. Terry Gert would like to comment and so would Mike Ritchie.
Okay, let's begin with Terry.
I think the thing you need to look at with, uh, being able to rent out parking spaces, it was like Bobby said, it's pretty self-regulated. Okay, when you're talking about congestion, okay. If you rent into university employees, they're gonna be there at seven o'clock in the morning. What's checkout time for, uh, for, for your units? Eleven o'clock? I think ten, eleven o'clock. Okay. University people are gonna be out of there by four. Yeah, Greg or Jim will get us up and saying. Well, the average time people check out or, or checking in, five o'clock, six o'clock. There isn't gonna be any congestion. Anything more than what's there now. So again, I think it's gonna be self-regulated. How many spaces can we add to, we know ahead and rent out. Not interfere with the check-in, check-out.
I just thought there was a certain thought, the number of people exiting at four o'clock. Pretty. Traffic congestion on Melrose.
That study was done. M P O D C, they, they did that study.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what, uh, the study I referenced earlier was. It analyzed that intersection and that northbound left turn movement was, was the highest backup. When they did that study in twenty eighteen to evaluate adding a restaurant to the rooftop. That's my understanding of it.
I think it's actually done, Steve and Greg have actually done their zoning.
I can find it sometime, but I, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I, they, they may have done a second study, uh, uh, one study. Prior, but, um.
Zoning commission, you know, study.
Yeah, so this is another zoning commission report, uh, you know, and, and the M P O. Report is from March twentieth, twenty eighteen and it's, um. It's to update trip generation estimates for, for nine oh one Melrose with the restaurant added to the restaurant. That's the one.
About the, for sure.
Yeah, so, so their, you know, their report. Basically concluded that the impact to Melrose east-west was minimal, um, for any delay, but. The, uh, northbound left turn movement.
So, so that only impacts the people who would be leaving the hotel or?
Yeah, either, or, or the alley residents. And so, and that's, and that's in their report here then. You know, that northbound movement makes up less than one percent of total traffic at that intersection and, um. That it's, you know, they commented that it's, it's a private drive, uh, backed up into the parking lot, but it also goes to the alley, which is a public area, so.
And wasn't your talk of, uh, university or city, I guess, putting a stoplight in right there at the Chinsy Drive, where maybe temporarily had them with years of. Construction of children. Is that still in the game plan and will that affect the traffic flow?
I don't know. At least those are back, I guess.
I don't either. I heard something last week. I don't know.
Yeah, I saw that.
Somebody in this room, I would think, that they were looking at something.
Well, I worked there and I, I heard as well that they were looking at that again, because of the traffic flow for the hospital.
Okay. They, they could be.
Uh, okay, Mike Ritchie, I need to speak and, uh, Pat Bauer next.
As, as far as the commercial parking, I was the biggest violator of, uh, commercial parking over there when I owned, uh. Twenty-four hours before I parked four cars at each place. And there's still a demand for, but the way I believe that the ordinance reason, Steve, is that you can still park cars. Uh, commercially in university highs if your owner occupied. Is that not correct?
I think that's right.
Yeah, so once again.
But that doesn't, I'm sorry.
Right, but once again, we're, uh, letting, you know, residential people, you know, park cars there. But a, a commercial property can't, and, and let's face it, it'll be reasonable on this thing. They're not gonna bring in forty, fifty cars and stuff. We're not talking about that, you know? Even if you put some restriction on the limit of it, but they're not gonna, you know, have all their parking taken up for, you know, all. People having lunch or breakfast or supper over there, dining or, and, and stuff on, on that thing or when they have events. So. I don't think that's really a big issue.
Uh, Pat.
Oh, no, I, I don't, Pat Bauer didn't want to speak on this. I don't think, okay.
Your last, you were studying.
Did I speak on it? The reasons why.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
Just, just so you know, what, what we do on this daily parking is about twenty spots. So, I mean, I would, I would say. Let's just put it at twenty-five or something and, and if, if you're okay with that, because that's. Any, any more than that, we, you know, are hurting ourselves. And, uh, and as far as the traffic. Now, when the traffic study was done, there was a very low, low, one, one percent of, of the traffic was generated by our, our. Commercial business there. So, uh, and, and we're not adding spots. We're just, we're just using the spots that are empty and. And I'd definitely be okay with passing an ordinance, something like that. And, uh, like I say, I, I don't think, uh, we're gonna. We, we wouldn't do any more than that because we've got to dance ourselves, you know? So.
So lesson, one percent of the traffic was from.
With, uh, northbound movement. So coming from that, yeah, at the intersection of Melrose coming north. On that drive, yeah.
Where are we at?
Add that and then we include both, like, twenty-five or less.
Um, Dan, so where we are right now is there's a motion in second to defer or to refer this. Twenty-three, twenty-one B to the zoning. Right, that's what you have on the table right now. If you don't wanna, I mean, if you wanna vote on that, you can. If you wanna withdraw that motion, you can do that if everybody's in agreement. But Tim's asking to withdraw the motion, Mayor, so you, you should ask if, if there's any objection on the council.
Is there any objection to the council withdrawing this motion? Okay, hearing none. The motion is withdrawn. Uh, so now we're at twenty-three, twenty-one B and daily parking discussion. You can put a motion on the table or we can just start with some discussion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to approve the resolution twenty-three, twenty-one B for the daily parking at the hotel.
Okay, is there a second to that?
A second.
Second by, I think Bobby?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh. Discussion. Any further discussion about it?
Is there a cap on that?
I didn't hear one.
Tonight, Steve?
Sure, you, you can. But, uh, with your motion, you wanna amend your.
Can I amend my motion? Yes.
You can, as long as nobody objects.
Okay.
Mayor, you should.
Yeah, okay. I don't hear any objections, so amend your emotion.
Uh, let's say twenty-five max.
Twenty-five max daily parking.
Yes.
Is there a second to that? No? Is that right? Second?
All second, I mean, yeah, sorry.
Second to Bobby's second. With a, uh, daily parking with a max of twenty-five. Um, discussion. Okay, ready for a roll call vote? Mike?
Moore?
I?
Yes, don't, so.
I'm sorry, I was looking down. I'm trying to write as I'm doing it, so I'm sorry, sorry. Uh Schroder.
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Swales.
Hi.
Don.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, so now we can go to resolution twenty-three twenty-two.
All second.
Motion by Bobby and second by Stephanie, right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you, and this is um. Allow temporary signs at the hotel for Easter and Mother's Day. So is there any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. No, I see some discussion.
I have a I have a question, just to clarify, so they have to approve. Any of the Mother's Day or Easter signs that they wanna use by city council in this motion, they have to approve them.
And that's all that's allowed? The bistro sign that was in the driveway for weeks, is it coming back, right?
I didn't I didn't put that up, sorry. Yeah, this is just Mother's Day, Easter. And yes, the our zoning ordinance and our EUD development agree, say, the council has to approve the location and the signs themselves.
And there's. Do you mind if I ask you a question?
Sure.
You can't do something to your permanent sign to to have a. A uh removable whatever.
I think we're gonna use the same sign over and over again, just change the date. It's what.
No, we're not putting any date on it. So it just says Easter brunch, it says Mother's Day. Have another.
Another side under that sign?
Well. It has those. I I understand is that what you're saying, to change out a slider down? Yeah, on the marquee. They're asking if we can exchange the panels and have panels made on the marquee sign. You mean, like you have two signs now, right?
Right, you mean to to put that as a Mother's Day or whatever on.
A third one on it, I haven't gone down.
Potentially we can on that side, I think, but. I have to check with. Yeah, probably have to be add a panel to it. And a lot of these marquee signs have multiple panels. I think we only have two. And uh and I don't know if we're at the maximum height restriction right now or not, or whether we could add more. I have to take that out.
For twice a year, I would, I would just withdraw the vote, I would withdraw their ass to.
It's just a question because you had other signs out there in the.
Yeah.
And then my only follow-up is. I mean, I guess to me it gets back to the. Do we wanna be the arbiter of what the sign looks like or? Like as a city, I mean, I I guess I would like to think that they put up a hideous sign and we asked them. To change it, that they would, because they don't wanna be good, I would hope that they would do that, but. Man, I guess you never can guarantee it, but like I just, I don't know that, I mean, maybe you guys feel differently, I don't. Wanna approve the sign that they, maybe there's only gonna be two signs forever and ever, but.
Again, it's a one-time thing, if you wanna create something, you're gonna use.
Let's build on it.
What you've already seen.
Yeah, right.
Okay, Steve, is there any more discussion? Before I ask Steve to clarify so that there's no issue with any confusion. Okay.
Twenty-three twenty-two, which uh would permit temporary signage on. For for Easter and for Mother's Day. And as I explained, that would still be subject to review and approval by the council with the location and the sign looks like.
Okay, so this is a roll call vote. Uh Mike, go ahead.
Schroder.
Hi.
Scott.
Hi.
Swales.
Hi.
Don.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, then we have twenty-three twenty-three. And. Yes, go ahead.
I'll I'll make a motion too.
Okay, there's a motion by Bobby, is there a second?
All seconded.
Okay, and this is to allow game day parking on the yard at nine oh five Melrose Avenue. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote.
Scott.
Hi.
Swales.
Hi.
Don.
Hi.
Moore.
Hi.
Schroder.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, now we have consideration resolution number twenty-three twenty-four. And this is setting a public hearing. On a proposal to amend zoning ordinance to increase the maximum number of off-screen parking spaces in the CH Commercial Hotel Zone from one ninety-six to two fifty. And directing staff to mail and publish notice by law. The council wanna have a discussion about this?
I hope that we postpone this until after we have a plan. We could view so before.
So can I, can I maybe? Oh, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
I I'm sorry, I didn't know that was a motion. So that was a motion to defer.
Yeah. Until we have a plan. Otherwise, if we're supporting it. Um when, I don't know if I can support it, because I I don't support. Parking in the green space or reducing the green space on the west.
Okay, uh is there a second?
I seconded.
Second by Lisa. Okay, so now we can have a discussion about deferring this.
I think it needs to be deferred. We we don't need to rush this and we don't have plans and I'm tired of getting things at the last minute. The reading review and how are we gonna send out any notice? That doesn't include that kind of information, sorry. I have something that's on.
Well, I agree, we we need to have a sequencing, right? I mean, we can't have a part of having a horse, so I agree, you need to look at the plan and then move forward.
Well, I think, okay, I agree, we need to look at the plan and then forward. My concern is on the timing, like essentially. Like, we know what they're gonna ask for, they're gonna ask to maximize the parking spaces that they have on their side, like that's not. But they're gonna come up with a plan that does it in a legal compliant way, right, like. It's just gonna be the number of spots essentially, right? Or am I?
I think if you approve this two fifty, then that's that's approval, but we give them a. Part of like that. Some way, somehow, I want the two fifty, but I don't think that could be done without.
So so what's, yeah, what's what's in front of us now is is to get a specific number approved. And another option is, you know, to change the. Zoning to be more in line with what. What is typical, right, for commercial, uh like, like, Ryan, is this, correct me. Like with Iowa City, you know, where it talks about minimum, like, I guess what I'm saying is. If we just got rid of the cap on the number of spaces that they have, they have to, whatever they do has to be compliant, has to be safe, right? Like, so normal process is that if he doesn't have a cap. And then he goes to Ryan and says, hey, I wanna build another parking spot, Ryan still has to run it through the normal. Filts or the normal building code restrictions, am I right, about that and say. But you do that and you now you don't have a fire lane and so you can't do that, like that's a normal process, right? I mean, that's a very funny. So is it a?
I I mean, I think that's a question I posed to Steve, so I think I would rather Steve maybe speak a bit better on that. So, yeah, that question was asked to me and I wasn't really certain.
But not not asking for unlimited number of spots, but just not putting a cap on it, I mean, whatever he does has to be safe and. Like, whatever.
Yeah, so I I I think I'm pretty sure we attend the most, the other. Other communities, I I didn't dig through the provision leading up to those tables, but it was based in there somewhere. I don't doubt that's what they say, but but this is not the fair ground, it's not. Just a, which is a negotiated. Arrangement. And it was important back at the time, doesn't have to be important today, that's your decision. But it was important back at the time to the zoning commission and for the council. That there be a cap, not a, not a uh minimum. And that's why it's expressed, I think, so. That's what I would say, if you're to answer your questions, you're gonna have to be, uh, it's gonna have to be safe, well, yes, of course. The other thing I wanted to say is, uh, one of the reasons that. That I think there's a need for a plan. And I'm, this is speculation on my part, because I haven't seen the plan, but for example, if any. If any uh plan to uh achieve. A greater number of spaces or two hundred and ten or two hundred and fifty or whatever it is, if that involves uh. Reducing green space. Okay, moving that retaining wall on the west, well, that's. You know, nobody has said that to me, so I haven't given notice, and I I don't know how to give notice of the public hearing. Because I don't know what they're asking for, because I haven't seen the plan. So that's that's that comes into consideration how as well.
That makes sense. How? And this is really illegal, how specific does it have to be, like, 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 like? Has to be like very exact.
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I chuckled only because, because between an engineer and a lawyer, I guess, Ryan helps specifically, it needs to be very specific. It's the same sort of specificity and 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 uh and comprehensiveness or whatever we. That that the hotel developers brought at the time that uh the original. EUD uh development agreement was was entered into and improved. And the same kind of specificity that they brought when they said, hey, we want to do a sixth floor and we wanna have more parking. So same, same style.
And so they. I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm. So if they, I guess, I just, this is a quite a a procedural question, more than like. I understand they have to have that, but if, let's say they get that to him tomorrow or in a week. And there's three weeks between that point, when we get it, we can review it in the public hearing. Is that sufficient from a procedural, like, standpoint, or does you have to have the final deal before you set up a public hearing? Notice.
So the first question's probably harder to answer than it is to ask. I need to know, I need to know what is giving notice. But I I don't think we can give an adequate notice to just say two hundred and fifty spots. Sure, you know, and so I think there's gotta be a fair amount of things. In terms of the timeline and and of course, you know, there's a publication, uh, you know, this. The August meeting is early, right, it's the eighth. The publication has to be, I think, twenty days ahead or no more than twenty days ahead. Um, the notice has to be mailed at a certain time. Press citizen, their printing schedule is not real timely, so there's there's some really parts, you know? I I can't speak for Ryan in terms of how much time he needs to review, how much time he anticipates back and forth between him. And maybe the developers, uh, engineers or designers, right? So I don't know, but like you said, I can't draft a notice unless I have.
Publication is no more than twenty days ahead, no less than ten.
Can I comment, please?
Yes. Did you stand up?
I just think. That if if Terry can. To maybe comment on how Iowa City does it. But if we just go to the minimum or where the language says minimum, like all the other jurisdictions, then I. I'll have time, I won't rush into it and creating a plan. And then Ryan can review the plan, it'll be engineered, it'll be, you know, there won't be any rush on trying to. For me to get this done, because the rush is that right now I'm. I'm. I'm stopped from parking on the grass, I'm stopped for a lot of these things because I don't have. Because of the one ninety-six max, if we just do one ninety-six minimum and wearing sixty, you know, no less than one ninety-six and all that. Stress goes away and I can concentrate on creating more parking. In a really good way, like like all the other cities, I. And maybe Terry can comment on how the other cities do it, and and we don't have to come up with a number. It'll be what, it'll evolve into something like Tim said, he's not gonna agree, he's not going to. Uh, agree with the wall side. He wants me to come up with different ways, so maybe the number's not two fifty, maybe it's two thirty or 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 something different than that. And, you know, and it it'll evolve into that, so. But if, but right now I'm restricted by the one ninety-six. On on trying to create revenue for the hotel on the football season. So if we change it to, you know, no less than one ninety-six on the ordinance, then I think. That gets rid of all that, that that stress that I'm going through and and I can concentrate on. Making good choices and our work with Brian and 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 city and and and. And do exactly what, you know, gets approved. My sense is that part of the issue is that. The standards that are cited in these other communities don't apply to existing EUDs that have been approved. With maximum parking space, number one. Number two. I'm concerned if the city adopts a number like two twenty, two fifty or whatever, or. Says let's just change maximum to minimum. But there comes a point where the owner is gonna say, look. We keep coming over to the city engineer and saying, well, how about this, how about this, and how about this, and he keeps saying, well. You got some problems here and you got some problems there. You approve me at two fifty, you gotta let me put two fifty in some of this, okay? That's why I think it's a cart before the horse to pick a number before you have a design. And when I think it's a cart before the horse to pick to change the word maximum to minimum before you have a design, all right? I mean, as I've said a couple of times. The the existing regulations would not permit any reduction in green space anywhere on the hotel develop. Okay, which includes nine oh nine, all right? All right, or the little island on the west side, or certainly the retaining. None of it, right, so. Does it do any good to say, well, we'll just make this a minimum and then you guys draw something that says, well, we don't want this grass here? And then the city engineer says, well, you can't do that because because it's zoning ordinance, so you gotta come back to the council, because the zoning ordinance changed, which is where you are now. It does impact, because on football Saturdays, I can't park more than one ninety-six, so if you make it to a minimum, then I I can't. I can park more than one ninety-six on the lot. If it goes to minimum and and I can work through. Anything, I can work through any parking moving forward with with Ryan, I I I don't, it's just like the way that. This city of Iowa City and Timpan and all the other jurisdictions work. I don't think that's true. I don't think those regulations apply to existing approved EUD developments. I really don't know, like, I don't know, so I would I would have to ask Terry. But I mean, if the council wants to make those changes, it can make.
Can I just just clarify, uh, so if we would propose, say. Thirty-spot parking addition somewhere. Then we would go and and submit that to you or to Ryan or. First, and then and then if you approve that, then you would raise the parking to that, there are thirty more. One ninety-six and you'd add thirty to that, so. From one ninety-six and you'd add thirty to that. So is that how that would work or?
Well, that's, I mean, that's what, that's what you asked for, was two fifty. So what we said was, well, show us where you're putting. And that's exactly how this is proceeding. I got an email saying, we want to change one ninety-six to fifty, and I said, okay, here's what I think we're half to half. But a council will approve that. One of the things I said, it wasn't just me looking at the P U D development agreement. And the zoning ordinance and other ones, it was me saying, city engineer, what do you need to know? Yeah, council to intelligently consider a move from one ninety-six to fifty.
Right. As a builder, I'm used to. The city saying, okay, you gotta have three spaces per apartment and you figure out how to get them in there. We, we don't usually have a. A, a cap and we have more of a, a requirement to have this many spaces based on your square footage or based on. Number of apartments or something like that. So, uh. So what, whatever we would propose, then. That cap just raises up that much if it's approved?
And that's what you asked for, so I'm gonna say.
Okay, that's, well, that's, that kind of was just a procedural, I wanna know how that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, I mean, yeah, so the easy way for me to say to Jim is. The zoning ordinance has to be the starting point before the P U D development. The zoning ordinance says no more than one ninety-six. So. You know, it's, it's.
Then we change.
How you wanted to change, how you want it changed, or how you want them to change, that needs to be communicated to us. We can tell you what needs to happen before then.
Okay.
My sense is. That regardless of whether it's a minimum or whether it's a cap number or whatever, it's gonna require a plan for the council to be able to.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I agree with the plan. I just think we can do the plan after. After the, the ordinance is changed. Every time, if I wanna have one spot, if I wanna have one spot, I have to come back and change. The ordinance and like Stan said in his, in his, in his report, ordinances don't, shouldn't be changed. They're, they're, you know, he, he. If it's like a government thing, I, I don't remember how he reported it, but. The, the point is, is every single time I wanna do one little thing, I have to change an ordinance. I don't, I don't, the problem I. Add a push, I could change the ordinance if it's in me, if it's an ordinance change. All that I'm saying is, is if we change the wording of the, we keep, and this is all to just keep the, the P U D, um. Public hearing. I mean, I'd be willing, like I said. Bring back the plan if you would wanna do it your way. I'd bring back the plan in two weeks. And, and, and go that route, but we don't need to go to the two fifty. Just change the wording to minimum. And change the wording to less than, I think it would go, I just.
But I think the, I wanna speak to Stan. I, I think the reason Stan said ordinances are. Difficult to change and they should be difficult to change, you know. In my world, that's what, that's what the city, you know, this was in an ordinance. It wasn't just in the P U D. It was in the ordinance for a reason. And as I've said about. Several times, you know, if, if council wants to change the ordinance, the council has the authority to do it, but. You know, with Jim's books, so we, we have to specify a number. Well, that's what you did specify. If you wanna specify some other change, you, you could ask for that, but I don't know how. You, you get around, you know, having the plans of the council knows what you're really asking.
I guess if I may, also, uh, I, Greg, I think. I think the number thing also is, I, I think you brought up the football parking, right, on game day, right? So the one ninety-six, I mean, and it counts as approved. Game day parking in the existing stalls on the existing lot, right? Not in the grass. Um, so a, at this point, and so. The question would be. Or, you know, the definition of off-street parking is solid surface parking spot. So, you know, if there was further. Consideration of grass parking, that number wouldn't impact grass parking. Because it's not a solid surface permanent parking stall. So. I don't know if your concern is a limited number because you wanna park additional. Cars on the lot. In a different orientation than the existing stalls or stripes. Um, or not, or if it's because of the grass parking, so.
Grass parking, it's one they will park on the grass. People are expecting me to let them park on that grass on football season, and right now I'm not gonna be able to do that. Unless, one, I get a comprehensive plan of what I wanna do to add parking. Or we change it to the minimum. Okay, I.
Okay.
And if we change it to the minimum, then I have time and, and I'm not restricted anymore by parking up the grass. And I have time to come up with a good plan, you know. Like I said, it can be two, it can be two one, two, two hundred, it can be two ten, it can be anything. I'm not, I'm not asking to. Not asking to, you know. A certain number, it, it evolved with, and, and what it needs to be. I'm just trying to be able to keep the public hearing. And the only way to keep the public hearing. Is you guys are not going to, uh, recommend to, to, without a plan, and I understand that. And you can get around that by changing it to minimum. Less than, and, and then I wouldn't be restricted to parking on the grass at that point. Right now I'm not restricted.
Yes, I, I think my point was that. Grass parking is not regulated by that number. So that's a separate issue.
He said it was earlier.
Well, it's regulated by the agreement, right? Uh, but if that number is restricting your off-street parking spaces. Which is defined by a hard surface. Non-dusty space in the, in the zoning.
Earlier you said the one ninety-six is my max.
Yeah.
Grass or no grass.
Well, you know, just that you're not allowed to park on the grass. It's a separate, separate issue. Where, where's the restriction of parking on grass?
Well, like I said earlier, I was just blowing up the stereo. I don't know what grass we're talking. So one thing.
Nine oh nine is.
We're talking about the railroad project.
Nine oh nine.
Sure.
Talking about nine oh nine.
Okay. Uh, so nine oh nine, uh, I mean, the restriction is that the P U D was approved. Only to have parking on hard surface mark, no more than a hundred and ninety-six spaces.
But that's.
No grass.
And the U D, it says, okay, so if we made a motion to revise that P U D to stay. The hotel's a built her can park bars on nine oh nine. On game days. Then we could vote on it.
You can't do it tonight because it's not on your agenda.
Okay.
If, if, if.
Understood.
Yeah, no, but, but, but there again, it takes its own. Because you can't, you can't do anything that allows parking of more than a hundred and ninety-six cars. I mean, unless, unless.
Unless you change it to a minimum.
Oh. So that count goes towards the grass parking cells, huh?
Well, I mean, it would. I mean, yes, it goes to any part.
Okay.
It was saying, I mean, I'm, I'm very strict, but if you change it to a minimum, that restriction goes away.
Can. We do have a motion on the table, right?
Yes.
What is that, Steve?
The motion by Ken and second by Lisa to defer. Uh. Consideration of twenty-three, twenty-four, setting a public hearing on a requested zoning change. Until there's a plan to review.
Okay, uh, does, is council ready to vote on that? Or do you wanna have more discussion? Okay, I don't hear any more discussions, so we'll have a roll call vote.
Whales.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Gunn.
No.
Moore.
Aye.
Schroder.
Aye.
Motion carries four one.
Thank you. Um. Now, um. We're done with the hotel. Uh, issues tonight and, uh. Steve, do you have direction of what goes on? Uh. For next month or?
Yes. I think I do. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll go to, uh, anything else with, uh, your legal report, Steve?
I think everything's on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Steve? Okay, we'll go to the clerk's report. Mike?
Um, other than my written report, the only thing that I'm working, we'll, uh. Rental permits annually run August to August. We've typically sent our first reminder email to landlords on July fifteenth. That's what we're shooting to do again. Uh, we'll, basically our procedure will run as it has. So. I believe that's the only other thing. I did not include in my reports.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike? Okay, we'll go to city treasurer and, uh, John Brown did, uh, submit, uh, warrants. For the council to review. Uh. Are there any additions or corrections or any? Uh. To the warrants? Are there any objections to, okay, go ahead.
There are two, there are two additions. I apologize. Uh, I included everything I got invoices for, but I did not get invoice, and I went through reviewing everything. And there are two clients we do not get invoices for, and one is for mo, from the Mobros for landscaping services. And for two seventy. And the other one is fifty dollars for a storage rental. So I would like to append the warrants list to include those, uh. Two expenditures that were not invoiced for, so they're not unnecessarily delayed because.
Thank you. Mobros and what was the other one? Storage?
Uh.
Let's just call it, and how much was that one?
I'll give you more, fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars. Okay, very good. So with those two additions, are there any objections to paying the bills? Hearing none, the bills will be paid by unanimous consent. Thank you, John. Uh, for not forgetting about those. Uh. Let's see, then we've gotta go back to, um. My agenda. And so here we are, um, police, community protection. So we have Chief Kelsey's here.
Good evening. Uh, there are some items that I need to touch on on my report. Then I'll answer any questions you have. Uh, automatic traffic enforcement, so camera enforcement. Uh, Steve and I had a conversation very late in the week and then continuing into early this week about. A review of the draft ordinance he put together last week. Uh. The ordinance that Steve sent out, I think, midday or this afternoon reflects those changes and. Is consistent with best practices, uh, if you choose to move forward with it. Uh, I know there was some conversation I had mayor with you and other persons about how fast we wanna move this forward. Uh, once we go live with it, if council chooses to move this forward and proceed with readings. Uh, there is approximately a ninety-day timeframe from, once we enter into the agreement. And have approval to move forward to the equipment being installed, uh, grace period and things like that. So we have. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight, nor do I think it should. Frankly, we've been discussing this for, well, Warren. When I came on and four years ago, Warren was one of the people in the community, Mary Panther. Uh, the gays and several others that brought up traffic concerns. And this has been something that has. Been an ongoing issue with university heights for years and years and years, and I don't think it's necessary to rush to a solution. I appreciate that you all have confidence and where the discussion on traffic cameras has gone the last two years to get to this point that we're ready to put it on the table. But I really think that we need to make sure that we're. Going through with the plan as we outlined it. If you choose to move forward with it, then I am pushing this out to media contacts. Uh, then I'm working with Lisa to make sure that it gets on the webpage, that community members all have a chance to hear about it. And bring any questions that they have for it. Uh, so, so those are my comments on the A T E update. There is contracts that I shared with Steve or service agreements that are both for equipment and then for the actual. Uh. Administration of the program. At some point, if you choose to move forward with those, those will need to be approved and signed. I believe that's one of the resolutions before you today. I'm not sure, is that right, Steve? Put that up, yes. So that is, before I move off of A T Es, if you don't have any questions on that. Uh. Or, or maybe you specifically do, but I, I think that it's still something we're pursuing. I've answered all the questions. The only. The only concerns that have been voiced directly to me so far have been about optics. Uh, how this appears for the university or for university heights, and that's why I think that it's important that we. Proceed very deliberately and, and involve everybody. And get everybody a chance to bring their concerns or questions and become as informed as we are on it. And then the other one was, and it was a question that, that councillor Swales had brought up before about. What happens to the license plate data that is collected by the system? Uh, that is all run under, are all collected and run under university heights police department. Uh, authority and it is confidential and restricted law enforcement use only. It is not sold on a secondary market or used for marketing or the property of our vendor. It is. It is purely our information. So those are my comments there. If anybody has any questions, otherwise, uh, I believe there's.
I, I wanna give, thank you, chief. I wanna give the public that is there, I only limited them to speaking about the hotel. If anyone from the public on the Zoom or in person would like to. Ask a question, speak on this, uh, you're invited to the podium.
Doesn't that appear so, mayor?
Okay, I, I don't, there's nobody, nobody wants to speak about it. Okay, very good. Uh. So I'm sorry I interrupted you and then you were gonna go on to.
Uh, the other issues that we needed to discuss, and I don't know as far as the motions, whether you wanna do it as I go through the reporter all afterwards, which was the appropriate mayor or Steve.
I think we ought to go through them. As you talk about them, I think that works nicely. First consideration of ordinance number twenty, no, two fifty-two.
So I'll make a motion, mayor.
Okay, there's a motion by Stephanie. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Bobby. This is authorizing, um. Let me get my glasses. Authorizing establishment and implementation of an automated traffic enforcement system. And establishing civil fines. There's a motion and second discussion. Okay, roll call vote.
Louise?
Yes.
Louise, your, your audio was real unstable right there. Would you mind, is it okay if I just reread the motion?
Yes, please.
Uh, motion by Gunn, second by Scott for first consideration of ordinance number two fifty-two, authorizing establishment and implementation. Of an automated traffic enforcement system and establishing civil fines.
Thank you.
Just. He cut out there.
Any discussion? Ready for a roll call vote? Okay, roll call.
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, chief, we have twenty-three, twenty-five, is that right? Yeah, it'd be twenty-three, twenty-five. Authorizing, yeah. Did you wanna talk about that a little bit, the service agreement?
Sure, the agreement itself is much like, uh, for instance, our, our equipment vehicle relief or agreement. So the vendor in this case, there's individual agreements for. The different equipment items, so fixed cameras, and we are talking about. In discussions about what would be best for the city, that would be one fixed camera system along the twelve-hundred block of Melrose. And one fixed camera system along Cozer, approximately the intersection of George Street. Uh, so that is in one of the agreements. And then another agreement is for, uh. Specifically lists a handheld unit so that. Uh, the police department and officers are able to do spot enforcement at other places in the community where there are complaints. Whether that's on Sunset or Cozer, down by the school, and it all ties into the same system so that it's not like. Some. And it all ties into the same system so that it's not like some violators are receiving traffic code violations with surcharges that have a different impact than ones that are creating offenses or committing offenses on another street. So there's, there's two agreements for equipment. And then the third agreement is actually the service agreement for administering the program. And that is they're all five-year agreements. And again, there's no cost to the city. There's a, it breaks out in a percentage. These are civil fines. They are, uh, they don't impact somebody's driving record or criminal record or, or insurance. But the, the, the agreements just they're legalese and the city attorney can speak to them, but, but we agree that we agreed, we entered into a an agreement with the parent company of GenOptic that they will provide this basically free of charge to the city and that they will administer the program as long as we meet certain terms specified and it's, it's fairly standard for this type of program.
Thank you. So this is resolution number twenty-three twenty-five is for the council. Is there a motion?
I'm on it. This is Tim.
Uh, thank you, Tim. Motion by Tim. Is there a second?
All seconded.
Second by Bobby, right?
No, Doug.
No, that was Doug. Oh my gosh, I'm sorry. Okay, motion by Tim, second by Doug. Is um, any discussion? Okay, roll call vote.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Gunn?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. And then, uh, chief, you're gonna discuss resolution twenty-three twenty-six, the Kel-Tec.
Yes, uh, we, just prior to my arrival back in, in early nineteen, the city entered into a fleet agreement with a company known as Kel-Tec. They provided the vehicles, they outfitted the vehicles with the emergency equipment required to operate them as patrol vehicles. That contract actually expired last, the end of last month or in, in last month. Uh, I knew that was happening and actually last fall I had, I don't know if Counselor Scott will remember the conversation, but I discussed this briefly with him. I discussed it with Steve Poole. Our options as presented were either to renew to, to enter into a new lease for new vehicles and new equipment and an upgrade uh, or to, per the terms of our existing contract, buy out our current vehicles and equipment. And we didn't have to buy all five of them if we didn't want to, but those were our choices either, either renew the contract under new terms and new costs or buy out the vehicles per old agreement. I suggested, uh, just because of where we were with budgets and where we were with COVID, I, I asked if it might be possible that there was a third option and that third option would be to extend the lease for one additional year, uh, under the current terms of the contract. So our, our, our payments for each period of time will remain the same. Uh, Kel-Tec took that back and considered it and said they would be willing to do that. The addendums, if you will, are, are just extend each of our lease and there's five of them. Uh, because we have five vehicles for one year and the only thing of any significance, I think the only change at all in them is that the residual value of the vehicles at the end of the year was recalculated, the buyout value, and will be lower than it would have been had we bought them out this year. Uh, we don't put very many miles on our vehicles. We're actually harder on them because of the slow speeds we drive and the amount of time that we idle and just leaning on the the various interior parts of the vehicle climbing in and out of them. So I think that it's, it made financial sense to do that, especially when we were in a time of uncertainty. So I should have consulted with the mayor and with, uh, the city attorney prior to moving this forward. But that didn't get brought to my attention until about two weeks ago, and I apologize for that. Uh, but that's why it's on the, uh, that's why it's on the agenda tonight as a, as an action item.
Okay.
On motion to through resolution twenty-three twenty-six.
Okay, motion by Bobby. Is there a second?
All second.
Second by Stephanie. Okay, thank you. Uh, discussion. Okay, ready for a roll call vote?
Schroder?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Gunn?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
I have one final item, uh, mayor that I'd like to discuss, and that is Rag Ride is coming through town at the last week of July, the last Friday night into Saturday morning. I have already been contacted by one resident in the community who said last time that they came through, uh, he hosted his team. That involves parking a bus on the street in front of his house. It will not park. He doesn't wanna park it in the lawn or in the driveway. It won't fit. There will be camping. This morning when we were testing some of the electronics in preparation for this meeting and I was discussing this with Mike Haverkamp, the city clerk. He mentioned that when Rag Ride came through previously, that the city took action to allow for Rag Ride parking and Rag Ride camping for that one night so that everything didn't either have to be in violation or approved on a contacting, yeah, special permission thing. So I, you know, I was unaware that that had happened last time. I think that that's a good idea. I, I don't know that it's, it can be done tonight without a resolution. And I don't know if there's gonna be a special meeting or not before Rag Ride that it could be, but I, anyway, I offer that up to you and to the city attorney for a possible resolution and how we can make that happen.
Steve, how can we make that happen?
My suggestion is that I'll just, if the council's blessing, I'll put together a proclamation for the mayor, for mayor for you to sign. And, uh, I think you can just sign that. And it will say that, you know, parking on yards like a football game is permitted and would consent to the honor. Basically vests discretion achieved with regard to traffic, uh, regulation and signs, signs can be placed with the consent of the honor. That's what we did in twenty eighteen, seemed to work well. So that's what I would suggest with the council's approval. We'll just do that. And everyone's nodding their head except Doug.
And that is typically what happens with Rag Ride. And there will be others. I'm confident of it with the overnight town being in Coralville and with the route coming out, not down Melrose, but coming through the stadium. Uh, there will be people that have friends or family or teams that are riding that want to camp here. There will be converted buses, tents, RVs that want to come through. It'll be for one night. And then there are typically signs that are put up so that as the riders come in and they know how to find their team in the community. And, and Rag Ride is, in my experience, pretty good about cleaning up after themselves, but I remember what it's worth.
Okay, so at Steve's suggestion is, uh, let's, uh, get approval by council that you're, the council is okay with, uh, Feb- it would be, uh, July twenty-ninth, Friday, to, uh, have a proclamation by the mayor for Rag Ride guests at residences in University Heights. All in favor? Say aye. How about that? Anyone opposed? Okay, very good. Steve, you'll put that together. Thank you.
And lastly, uh, for OUP, there was again discussion about parking and some of the issues, some of that's outlined in my report, but that kind of brought to light again the fact that we have a park out here that hasn't been used for about four years. We've tried to sell it before and that hasn't happened. There is some renewed interest in it. I would like to with, with your blessing, I would like to post it locally for just a short period of time. I know that there are at least two people in the community that have expressed some interest in it again. And just last time, the best offer we had was a thousand dollars for it and council didn't feel that was enough. But I, I'd like to see what we can get for it again. And, and anything is something and we can get it out of the lot. So with your approval, I'd like to move forward with posting that and and whether it be for two weeks or for a month and, and trying to move that out of here.
And then you'd bring that back to council for approval, for final approval. Is that right?
Yes, I would. Whatever the highest offer was, I would bring back to council and say, here's what we were offered. Is this something that, are you willing to accept this at this particular time? And no police equipment would go with it. The, the graphics would be stripped off of it and the top lights would be taken off and destroyed. But any other non-police and equipment in it, whether it's mostly the cages or the push bar and things like that, that's okay. That's not restricted materials. That's okay if it would go with it. And somebody might have the use for that as far as a carrier for their animals or something like that.
So Steve, is okay to have a simple motion for, uh, for a chief Kelce to, um, post that police car?
You bet.
Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
I'll work with that to put something brief together and then maybe through Mike to get it posted to the press citizen if that's where we usually go and with Lisa to get it posted to the webpage. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have tonight.
Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, okay, finance. Bobby, do you have anything tonight?
No.
Okay, streets and sidewalks. I know Ryan and Doug have a few things.
There you go. Uh, yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I'll just kinda run through my report which sent out, so I apologize kinda late last night. Um. Uh, the Metronet, I performed a walk-through at Metronet, uh, north of Melrose to review sod installation. Uh, s- some areas, you know, it's been a tough spring, uh, for watering sod and getting grass to grow, uh, really for anybody, but, um, some areas look like they're taking. But there are other areas that probably need to be re- redone. So kinda at this point, if, if you or anybody receives complaints, I, I don't know if it's worthwhile for them to replace it until we get closer to fall. So may wanna just relay that to them or let me know if there's a specific address. Um, or no elementary, just to button that one up, we, you know, we did issue, uh, we had noted that we kinda had a final plans in the middle before the June regular meeting. And so we did issue final site plan approval on June fifteen. Uh, George Street cold sack repairs. So I just wanted to give an update. Uh, we talked about this one last meeting. I, I did correspond some more with Lynch Excavating and Metronet. Uh, recall that this was, this is a repair that was kind of started due to Metronet damage to Santeri Stewart main underneath George Street cold sack off of Melrose. Uh, and then in addition to that, the other half of the street is in, is in quite poor condition. Um, and the intake is cracked halfway through it. So um, I, I, I wanted to take the opportunity to try and repair the rest of that roadway and replace that intake, uh, by obtaining an estimate from Lynch Excavating. They aren't providing me an estimate until they get paid by Metronet. Uh, so I followed up with Metronet to make sure that check's going through and they, they're, they're claiming that it's, it's on in process. Oak Crest Avenue and Massey Drive intersection improvements. Uh, so I, things have been going pretty well out there, I think. Uh, I think all the restings, I haven't heard a, any major complaints, um, come through, but Pelling was onsite this week to perform the asphalt overlay work on Oak Crest. So the only remaining work is to finish up the concrete surround around the manhole in the center of that intersection, uh, Santeri Manhole for Iowa City wastewater. So, and then, um, and then we'd be looking just at restoration where all the sidewalks and the roadway paving would be complete. Uh, Monroe Street improvements. Uh, so we had, we approved the, the order of the construction contractor, Beath Construction, uh, at our special meeting in June. And the contract documents have been executed, signed, and, um, Beath is currently planning to begin work on August fourteen, which is the, the late start date that stated in our contract. They are, they're currently working on a university project and they plan to move to our project immediately following. Payment markings, I wanted to provide an update. Pelling started some of the pavement marking work on Melrose Avenue this past week. Uh, it's, it's obviously not, not completed yet, but, uh, they're working that into their schedule as they can. They have until August four to complete all the pavement working, marking work in town. Uh, nine oh nine Melrose Park line. I know we talked a lot about this, um, tonight, so I'll just skip over that, but twenty twenty-three Gulfview Avenue Drainage Channel Maintenance. So I apologize, I didn't have much on this. There, we, we approved funding and in our current fiscal year budgets, completed drainage channel maintenance projects, uh, between one thirty-six and two oh four Gulfview Avenue, uh, in this current fiscal year. Uh, we've got fifty thousand dollars budgeted to complete that work, uh, which includes the, the design work. Um, originally the plan was to complete that during the winter because typically for stream projects and channel projects, when the ground's frozen, it's easier to work in those areas. However, the property owner at two oh four, they began their own sponsored project to, uh, stabilize the slope adjacent to their foundation, their house. And so they had contractors hired to perform some tree removals and, um, some smaller retaining wall work and, and, and earthwork, um, fill and grading, um, to stabilize their store. So as they were doing that work, we, we did ask the tree removal contractor to remove a few trees that we knew we needed taken out for the channel work to just get it done and have a, a price on it. So I talked to Mayor Fromm about that. That was twenty-nine hundred dollars. So I gave him the approval, um, to do that work and it's been completed. The excavator, I requested a quote from, which is, uh, attaches resolution number twenty-three twenty-nine tonight to accept the quotation for twenty twenty-three Gulfview Avenue Drainage Channel Maintenance. So I requested a call from the contractor, uh, that's performing that adjacent work and the submitted quote is twenty-four thousand eight hundred and seven dollars and sixty-two cents, which is, is under what we would have estimated for the cost from that portion of the channel work. And, and with the the other twenty-nine hundred dollars for the tree removal would still put us under budget currently, or what we had in the fiscal year budget for that project. So that adjacent homeowner, uh, was supportive of, of us completing this project, uh, faster instead of waiting until winter so that, uh, her property wouldn't be damaged twice. And, and really when we were looking at design options, accessing the ravine prior to when she started that work was, it was going to be really difficult. Um, so we were probably gonna have to go through the backyards of two properties to the east of the channel and come through the railroad right away from the, the north or to the east to be able to get into that area, uh, because it was so steep next to her, this two oh four stuff, so. Um, so it, it presents an opportunity for the city to say, to kind of get in and get that work accomplished, um, with, with the permission of that property owner currently. So you're gonna need your access. So.
Yeah, so resolution twenty-three twenty-nine is for the council. Uh, is there a motion?
I'm motion.
Motion by Bobby. Is there a second?
Yeah, the other Bobby, I know too.
Thank you. Uh, discussion. Roll call vote.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Gunn?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Ryan? Are you all finished, Ryan?
Uh, yeah, I, the, the only thing I had left, uh, was miscellaneous. Uh, I just wanted to grant to the council's attention that we, you know, you and I had talked with the Metropolitan Planning Organization about this Save Streets For All Grant Program. So, so we, uh, the MPO Iowa City was going to, uh, submit an application for this, uh, SS4A Save Streets For All Grant Opportunity. Safe Streets For All grant opportunity, which is a, a, a new grant. And, um, they, the MPO reached out to Orville Tippin, North Liberty and University Heights as well uh, to ask if they'd like to be included in that grant application. Uh, currently the understanding is that, uh, the grant is for an engineering study to, um, analyze problematic intersections and provides possible solutions for, for upgrades for safety at those intersections. So, um, the application is pretty informal, the way the MPO described it to me and the city. Uh, all the cities would have a split, a twenty percent, uh, match, uh, for the funding. However, at this point in time, there's not a firm commitment from every city, but you can still drop off the application. Uh, and then the MPO would just reduce the amount of money they need to perform that study. And so they would not accept the full amount they requested from, for, for the grant at that time. So so we still have some time to make a decision and get more clarity on, uh, details from the MPO on that. But we've, we've all, all five member cities have joined that application or just, yeah.
Thank you, Ryan, for, uh, working on that application for us. Thank you. Uh. Mayor Fromm? Yes.
Uh, Paul Moore had a question.
Oh, okay. Paul, do you wanna come up to the podium? Thank you.
Paul Moore, thousand and a thousand six Melrose Avenue. I apologize, I haven't bothered you for a couple of years and haven't met some of these council persons. Uh, last fall, I talked with the mayor about the Melrose Avenue project and I talked briefly with Ryan Poe. I kinda like the report where the Melrose Avenue project is.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Is there a plan yet that we've signed key contracts?
Uh, no, no, not yet. No, Paul, we're still in preliminary design. Honestly, uh, the, the additional projects that we got approval to do, uh, like the Monroe Street project and, um, getting construction started on the Oakcrest and Massey project, um, to get those out specifically to Monroe Street on, in time to get it constructed this, this season has put us behind schedule on the design work on the Melrose stuff. So there, there's survey completed, uh, but we still, we don't have like a, a plan sheet started to be printed yet.
Well, I'd like to request permission from the council to meet with you and your engineers and Mid-America Energy about my electrical services before things are cut and dried and nobody knows my point of view.
Yep.
So I'd like to ask that courtesy if I could have that.
Yeah, certainly. Thanks, Paul.
Uh, Mayor Pat Bauer also would like to make a comment.
Yeah, you've been doing this with the hotel and the police. I just had questions about the building zoning and sanitation resolutions. As I read through those, it seemed that responsibilities of Terry and Brian would include making sure that nine oh one Melrose is honoring the zoning ordinance and the additional zoning agreement and the HUD agreement. And I just wanted to make sure that we're determined whether that's your understanding, whether that's council's understanding of the responsibilities and whether that's their understanding of their responsibilities. There was a lot of talk earlier tonight about non-compliance. And I just think that in light of that, this is something that should be determined now in connection with these two resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Um, so, okay, are there any questions with, uh, streets and sidewalks? So we'll move to building zoning and sanitation. And Steve, you prepared these, uh, resolutions?
Yes, that, their employment agreements, part-time employment agreements, Terry Gert is a building official and Brian Jensen is a housing official. They are, uh, just a, a re-up of what the council has previously approved with the exception that the compensation has changed from hourly, uh, to, uh, annual compensation. Other than that, they're, they're identical terms and, uh, there's, they've been signed by Terry and Brian, so the council agrees and everything's good. The council did approve these salaries in June and, uh, those salaries were to start July one. And even though it's July eleven, these contracts are effective as of July.
Okay, so we have first, uh, consideration of resolution twenty-three, twenty-seven with, uh, Terry Gertz. Is there a motion?
All motion.
Motion by Bobby, right? Second by?
By Tim.
Okay. I know it got a little garbled. Uh, that's my excuse now. Uh, so a motion and second, uh, discussion. Roll call vote.
Swales?
Aye.
Gunn?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Then we have consideration resolution twenty-three, twenty-eight. And this is with, uh, Brian Jensen. Why, I don't, I see it. Oh, there it is. Brian Jensen. Okay. His contract. Motion by Bobby. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie did it. Stephanie got that one.
Okay, thank you. Uh, discussion. Uh, roll call vote.
Gunn?
Aye.
Moore?
Aye.
Schroder?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Swales?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Anything else, Tim, that you wanted to discuss under?
No, I think we can discuss the issue that you brought up at another meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, e-government, Lisa, uh, sent around, uh, e-government report.
It's written. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa? Okay, we'll go on to announcements and I wanna, it's not really announcement, I just wanna thank, uh, Stephanie Gunn who is is taking, uh, two meetings representing University Heights as a alternate for me. And the first one is the MPO Urbanized Area Policy Board tomorrow. And then the other one is the joint entities meetings next month, entities meeting next Monday. Thank you, Steph, for doing that. I appreciate it. Are there any announcements? Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone.
Please. Minute. Question?
Hold on, we had one.
I am.
I have a, I have a quick question. Well, first of all, I wanna say thank you for talking to me, everybody, you know. Just wanna say an apologies for my passion. I'm a very passionate person and I'm sorry, I don't mean any hard to go into sort of anyone. Um, but I do have one quick question is, um, I'm gonna go to work on trying to create a plan to create more parking. I was just wondering if I get that done in the next two weeks? Or is there any options to present it to the city council sooner than, uh?
Steve, what, what do you say?
Yeah, I mean, if, sure, it could be presented to the city and even to the council, uh, like you said, with this short, you know, short interval, the, the public hearing for a zoning change has to be at a regular council. So one, two, the next regular council meeting is four weeks from tonight. Um, you know, and you know, I, I'm gonna, I'm thinking that, that the, the, the notice that we have to send and publish is gonna have to be ready to go probably two weeks from today. So that means for the council to have a plan, you know, it'd have to be submitted to the, with city engineer and reviewed. Not saying it can't happen. I guess that, that would be my point. It'd be the sequence is gonna be good to the, good to Ryan and.
I'll just work on it as fast as I can and.
Yeah, no, there's nothing wrong with it. The council can have a special meeting if it wants to set a public hearing. It's, dude, it's gonna be biting that publication schedule.
I just, I just wondered if there was an option or if it was asked to be, you know, if they're like, I appreciate your time. Thanks.
Well, two weeks would be on the twenty-fifth. So you're saying, Steve, if maybe it got to the twenty, received by no later than the twenty-fifth?
Something like that. Actually, what I, what I'd really like to say is, why don't I figure it out for, for real?
Okay, and then what? You'll, you'll get back to us in an email?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry, got a little fuzzy, but I think I got it. Uh, okay, I'm sorry for rushing it. Is there any objection to adjournment? Hearing none, the meeting is adjourned by unanimous consent. Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening.